Welcome to City Council. Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under a single bill with liberty and justice for all.
All council members are present except for Councilmember Agnew is absent and excused. Is there any changes to the meeting agenda? Is North Shore, are we going to have to change the order for the presentation for that? I heard they're...
My understanding is that the person who is doing the presentation is not going to be able to arrive before seven. So when we get to that one, if you want, if the council wants to table it until the person arrives, you can do that at that time.
All right. So, all right, we have City Manager. No City Manager reports? All right. Any council member reports?
Some committees?
Yes, please.
I have one from, and if somebody wants to leap in before me, from LTAC. They met today. And we looked at analytics to see what was coming through Street Sense in our webpage that we have, and they seem to be delivering along with the app creator of Bandwango. The October data went down, but that, we think that's probably October where people are getting back into their schedule. Most of the hits came from Seattle, and then San Francisco, Los Angeles, Vancouver. Danae is staying aware of new and changing things on the market. The hotels are averaging about a 68% occupancy rate, which I guess is a very good thing. And Main Street decorations seems to have been a big hit, and the group that we were working with is, has been a very responsible group, and everybody seems to like them up through January because January is so dark with the decorations. And then the last thing is that they are exploring new events that could be hosted through hotels, but that, it's just in the beginning talking stages. And that's it. Oh, wait, sorry. Faked you out there. Chamber officially opens up on Saturdays this summer. So if you have people in town, they can go to the Chamber on Saturdays. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Anyone? Councilmember McCallum?
Thank you. And I also attended the Lodging Tax Committee today, and I was very impressed with their report. I want to thank Danae because I think she did an excellent job of really talking about the contract being up in April and that we started a year ago May, and so you really need another year to kind of really see the trends and what's happening. Also, I thought what was impressive was that Street Sense will do the research in April to see how they're really accomplishing their goals, and if they do not accomplish what they promised to do, they will not charge us until they reach those goals. So it was pretty impressive to kind of hear how Danae was managing it, and the hotel, one hotel and restaurant was there as long, as long as Deputy Mayor Zorn's, and I thought that it was a very interesting meeting. It was my first.
Anyone else? Committee reports? All right. Seeing none? All right, on to visitor comment. So each person addressing the council will give his or her name in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless the council grants further time, shall limit the address to three minutes. No person other than the council and person having the floor will be permitted to enter into any discussion either directly or through a member of the council without the permission of the mayor. So I have one sign up sheet here. Bob Baldridge. Do you like to come forward? Right up to the podium.
Hi, my name is Bob Baldridge. I'm with Hallmark Realty, and I live at Boulevard Place. And I'm on a committee called Development on our doorstep, so we're very interested in the development that's going to happen adjacent to us across the street, and we hope to do a lot of positive input into that. And mostly I'd like to thank Becky Range for coming over and giving us a presentation on the parking issues. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much. That was the only sign up I had. Is there anyone else that would like to come up and give public comment? Please come up. Tell us your name.
My name is Yvette Ivanoff. Good evening. Tonight, I simply wanted to address that it's wonderful that the city of Bothell has approved the restrictions on single-use plastic bags, and it's even better that the Washington State Senate has done so as well last week. It's something that has an impact on our planet. I just wanted to suggest that similar action be taken with banning single-use Styrofoam here in Bothell, considering that there are multiple compostable alternatives that can be used. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last call? All right. Thank you. So we're on to the consent agenda now. Anyone?
I make motion that we pass the consent agenda.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
All right. We have Councilmember Dewar first, Deputy Mayor Zorn's with second. And we have voting. Plus. All right. We have a unanimous in the positive, so consent agenda passes. So on to item five, the public hearing. So we have a continuation of the public meeting from the public hearing of 2019 Plan and Code Amendments to the Capitol Facilities Element and Establish Minimum Density and Intensity with the Canyon Park, North Creek, Northeast, 195th Street Activity Centers. So are we having any discussion, or are we just...
This evening, Mayor, we're still in discussions with the appellant's on the SEEP appeal, so we're asking the council to continue the public hearing to February 18th, which we believe will give us enough time to hopefully resolve those issues, but at least continue to work toward that, and we'll have some direction for council at that point in terms of whether we finalize the public hearing and go forward with an appeal or withdraw, resolve the appeal at that time.
All right. So we have the recommended action. Do we have a motion?
I move the recommended action.
I move the recommended action.
Second.
All right. We have a Councilmember Dewar with the motion, Councilmember McCullough with the second for the recommended action of move to the, move to continue the public hearing to February 18th of 2020. Any discussion? All right. All right. We have a unanimous with Councilmember Agnew absent and excused. All right. So it looks like we're on to item number six here, executive session, closed session. So we have... So pursuant to Washington Open Public Meeting Act. What's the typical portion that...
Yep. Usually the mayor would announce that we're going to be going into executive or closed session, and then we'll read the specific RCW. So there are two items tonight. First is an executive session that's pursuant to RCW 4231101I for potential litigation, and the second matter is a closed session pursuant to RCW 423144A for labor negotiations, and action is expected after that closed session.
And that's expected to go for 40 minutes?
Total for both matters, yes.
All right. So we'll go into executive session until 6:50.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.[600.16]
All right, council's back in section. So we are moving on to AB 20-005, consideration of collective bargaining agreement with the Ask Me Council. Number two, Local 3845 for the 2020-2022.
Thank you, Mayor. The proposed agreement is in your packet this evening, and the recommendation is to allow the city manager to execute the agreement prior discussion in closed session. I would also like to point out that members of the Ask Me Bargaining Unit are here this evening, including President Kerry Caffrey and Robin Schaefer, who are on the negotiation team. And I would just like to thank them for their collaboration and level of professionalism throughout the process.
So yeah, Director Peru was very just glowing of this negotiations. And so I just want to say thank you very much. It's always good to hear that there's just camaraderie and everyone is realizing we're all in this together. So thank you, thank you for making it easy, you know.
I'd like to move the recommended action.
All right.
Second.
All right, we have a council member Dewar with the motion and council member Thompson with the second to allow the city manager to execute the 2020-2022 collective bargaining agreement with the Ask Me Council number two, Local 3845. Any discussion? Seeing none, place your vote. And it passes unanimously with council member Agnew absent and excused. All right. Moving on to AB 20-006, consideration of an ordinance granting a small wireless facility franchise agreement to New Singular Wireless.
And council, for this topic, we have Alana Zanna from Ogden Murphy Wallace. She's our outside counsel that negotiated these franchise agreements. As you will recall, these were on the agenda back, I think at the end of December for the first reading. And so this is the second touch that's required in order to pass franchise agreements. And with that, Ms. Zanna.
Good evening, thank you for inviting me back here tonight. I'm going to speak tonight about both the AT&amp;T, otherwise known as New Singular Wireless, Small Wireless Facility Franchise, as well as the Verizon franchise within the same slide deck. Just because they're almost identical franchises with very little difference. They're doing the same thing, and they are both in front of the city council tonight. I'd also like to mention that both representatives from AT&amp;T and Verizon are sitting in the audience tonight. And so if there are specific questions related to their infrastructure, there might be times where I just defer to them so that they can speak about their own facilities as opposed to me speaking for them. As some of the council members remember from the meeting several months ago, if you have any questions, please feel free to interrupt me, ask the questions. I've built this presentation in a way and format so that I can answer those questions for you. Otherwise, I'm going to proceed. So first, let's talk about city authority. City has broad authority over its rights of way, and there are three specific RCWs that give cities that authority. This is not the first franchise to appear before the city council. Back in 2017, we had several wireline franchises come before the city council. And before that, you could remember maybe Comcast coming before the council. The very first franchise I did in Bothell was about 12 years ago, and it was Verizon. At the time, had a cable franchise. They have now since moved to Frontier and then Northwest Fiber. In November, there was a transfer of that franchise then. So the city of Bothell has a lot of telecommunications-related franchises along with energy, such as gas and electric from Snowpud and PSE franchises. So it's quite a common contract for the city of Bothell to see, along with other cities. And just from a basic premise, what is it? It's the rules of using the road in the city of Bothell. It's a contract document that's passed by the city council that says, "We expect you to operate in our rights of way pursuant to this contract." And specifically, we want you to pull permits, we want you to give us indemnification, insurance, et cetera. These particular franchises are for small wireless facilities. They are not for wireline facilities. And in fact, the franchises specifically speak to that, saying you can only create the small wireless facilities under the franchises. You can't install wirelines connecting those facilities under these franchises. Further, these franchises do not allow them to have cable communications under these franchises. So they can't operate a cable system, which means that they're not in competition with Northwest Fiber or Comcast, and they don't provide the city the 5% franchise fee that cable franchisees do. And part of the reason for that, by the way, is under RCW 3521-860, cities cannot charge telecommunications operators for the usage of the right-of-way, similarly to how it would charge a Comcast or Northwest Fiber operating a cable system. Cable systems do get charged a 5% franchise fee under federal law and also state law. So a little bit more brief history here. This is a picture to the right of the design and construction standards adopted in April 2019 for your downtown area of the expectation of what a small wireless facility would look like. Neither of these applicants have necessarily applied to put a small wireless facility in the downtown area right now. They probably will in the future, but what that future looks like, I don't know. It could be one year from now, five years from now. So this just briefly goes through what happened. September 2018, there was FCC order regarding small cells, greatly restricted cities' abilities to control the build-out of small cells, specifically incorporating shot clocks, how much fees can be charged related to issuing permits, and rental of city-owned facilities, as well as specifying that cities need to adopt aesthetic and design standards. The city then went through approximately a year's worth of studying their design concepts and rewriting the Bothell Municipal Code. And in November, you saw me here talking about the new code and revisions to both the small wireless facilities and the macro facility code. And then in December, the franchises that are at issue today were in the council packet for the first reading. All franchises require two readings. The first reading was just in the consent agenda, knowing that I was coming for the presentation tonight. Just to see what these look like, I've added two pictures. Some of these you might have seen before. The first one to the left is a picture I took by the stadiums in downtown Seattle. It's a Verizon deployment. I know it's in a shadow, but if you look carefully about, if you look straight up from the parking sign, probably midway up the pole, there's a box to the left that's an equipment box. And right underneath that is a small disconnect box. The disconnect box is important. It means that when a contractor or the pole owner comes out, they can switch, flip the disconnect and turn off the antennas in order to access the pole. At the very top, though, it might look in the shadow like there's one antenna. There's actually two antennas sticking out from the pole. And they're at the same elevation, which is why they look about one. The one on the right is a Verizon deployment in Bellevue. And this is a close-up of that same deployment, sorry, of that deployment. Unlike the one on the left where the equipment box is underneath the light standard, here the equipment box is above the light standard. I believe that had to do with the height of the pole, but I wasn't involved with the construction of either of these. But I wanted to give you an idea of what a Verizon deployment on a wood pole looks like. Their designs may change, especially as 5G antennas come out. So all of these are 4G facilities. And we would expect that the most recent applications that we'll see, probably in the next year, will probably be for 4G build-out and then 5G to follow along with that. So you might see multiple antennas on a pole, like you see on the left, that there's two antennas. And the design standards allow for multiple antennas. This is a picture of an AT&amp;T deployment on a wood pole. It's out of Eugene. Different from the Verizon deployment, there's a canister antenna a little bit off to the right, right above the light standard. And then as you go down, there's an equipment box. And I believe I've shown these pictures again before, but wanted to show them again. These were pictures I took in Los Angeles. They're pictures of attachments to metal pole light standards. This would not be allowed in your downtown core. So recall the picture I showed earlier about what we would expect the designs to be in the downtown core. But I wanted you to see what a potential build-out could look like on a metal pole. So as I mentioned before, these are small wireless facility franchises only. So macro facilities cannot be constructed under these franchises. So the large antennas, big equipment, outside equipment areas can't happen under these franchises. One thing to note, though, is that in 2017, the city of Bothell issued a macro facility franchise to Verizon Wireless. So under a different franchise, Verizon Wireless could construct macro facilities. That franchise requires that they go through the development review process and that they get city approval to cite their macro facilities in the right-of-way. As I said before, they can't construct wireline facilities, they cannot operate a cable system, and they must comply with the new BMC 1211. Additional franchise provisions. It's a non-exclusive franchise, and I will let you know right now that there is another applicant requesting a franchise in the city of Bothell. So I would expect that that'll come up to the city council in the next couple of months. And they will also request a small wireless facility franchise. It's limited to five years with an auto renewal for five years. And the auto renewal, you can terminate that auto renewal upon notice. So that's why it's not a 10-year franchise. Again, this franchise is about the rules of the road. It requires them that they pull permits, it discusses stop work orders, it discusses undergrounding restoration requirements, and as well as relocation requirements and requiring that they relocate for city projects on their own dime. There's also significant indemnification and insurance provisions. Those provisions have been reviewed by the WCIA as well. There's construction bond requirements and a security fund for both of these franchises, and the requirement that they reimburse administrative costs. So that includes costs of city time as well as costs that the city paid to my law firm and myself for the drafting of these franchises. And with that, I've finished the presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much for the presentation there. Some new examples of the different small wireless facilities. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. You had mentioned something about a year-long study on this. Who pays the bill on that one?
So the drafting of the Chapter 1211, which took approximately a year, was paid by the city of Bothell. So it was not reimbursed by the franchisees, either these two or any in the future.
Okay, and is that going to be, will that be a continual thing that we have to, does the city pay for?
I wouldn't expect so.
Just one time?
If there's a change from the FCC or several years from now, you might decide to update your code. Then at that point, yes. You might decide to update your code next year, for all I know. But right now, I think you've got a pretty good code, and I don't see a reason why you would need to update it.
Okay, but if the FCC did come down and said that there's some changes that need to be made, we would have to redo that again, or?
Depending on what those changes look like. We tried to create some ability in the code for us to adapt to such changes. For example, we didn't put in the code the actual shot clocks declared in September 28 FCC order. That's in guidance to the director and to the permitting text, but not in the code itself. So if the FCC's order was overturned on those dates, on the shot clocks, then the code wouldn't have to be revised for that. So it really will depend. I cannot foresee that an entire code rewrite would be needed again in the near future.
Okay, and do you have any idea what those costs are?
I don't, off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Okay. The reason I was asking the question is because in some of the meetings, committee meetings that I attend, this topic has come up quite often about the costs that the cities are absorbing on these items. So that's why I brought it up, is it'd be interesting to hear what those costs are. Thank you.
Councilmember Dewar.
To add on to that, so it's the FCC that determines whether or not we're allowed to charge for the work that we do in order to let them be in the city?
Correct.
Okay.
And I'm going to qualify that. It's what the FCC and RCW 3521-860.
Which is the city or state code?
RCW is a state requirement.
That's what I wanted to know.
Since before, since about 2000, but.
Can you quote that RCW again?
Sure, I'll even, I put it in the slide deck for you. So it's 3521-860. But the FCC small cell order that came out in September 28 specifically discussed that cities must charge reasonable, objective costs. And then they've created safe harbors for the costs related to permitting and rental of city-owned property. Now, in the city of Bothell, you actually don't own a lot of your own poles. So the AT&amp;T, Verizon, Crown Castle, Exponent Mobility, T-Mobile, et cetera, will actually be renting the poles from PSE or Snowpud, not the city of Bothell. So those safe harbor costs really won't affect the city with regard to rentals. However, with regard to permitting, it does say you need to charge actual costs. That's not so different than what you've done in the past for any sort of permit. You charge actual costs for what it takes to review it. But what you were mentioning, council member, was the idea of recouping the costs for actually drafting the code work. And the FCC doesn't necessarily provide a mechanism for that because you can't really tie that actual cost to a specific permit or to a specific franchisee. These particular franchises, though, we do request administrative costs related to that, which would include my fees and city time related to it. And that's permitted under RCW 3521-860, as well as the FCC order that allows you to charge actual costs. And that's an actual cost incurred by the city related to these franchises.
So your time was reimbursed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, so then.
I move the recommended action.
So it looks like we have, so you're doing a presentation on the two. So we have AB 20-006 and 20-007.
And we should probably take one at a time.
Yep. So.
So I moved to adopt the proposed ordinance granting a small wireless facility franchise to New Singular Wireless PSC LLC.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion by councilmember Dewar, a second by councilmember Thompson. Any discussion? Place your vote.
All right, motion passes unanimously with councilmember Agnew in absent and excused. On to AB 20-007.
I move to adopt the proposed ordinance granting a small wireless facility franchise to Seattle SMSA Limited Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by councilmember Dewar, a second by councilmember Thompson. Any discussion? All right, place your vote. There we go. Thank you. Passes unanimously with councilmember Agnew absent and excused. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so. We are on to AB 20-008, consider of an ordinance to amend Chapters 2.44 and 2.45, expanding membership of the Parks and Rec Board and Bothell Arts Commission to include youth members. So it looks like we have Assistant City Manager Ms. Oli presenting on this. City manager, I like the format of this layout here. Nice, has the information right here. It's helpful.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kelly Mizoli, Assistant City Manager. This evening, for your consideration, I am presenting on Agenda Item 8C, which is AB number 20-008, adding youth members on boards and commissions. Give me just a moment, get it to warm up. So being connected to the community is an important piece of what we do here at the city. We believe that community connections are built with a strong communications program, which includes us sharing information with our community members. And beyond that, we also look to engage with them, meaning we seek feedback on the things that we are doing or going to do in the city. This item tonight is part of a first step to expand our community engagement strategy and efforts specifically to bring in more youth perspective. So as you're aware, the council has an established structure through which it receives feedback from community members on a number of different matters and issues, also known as city council advisory boards. This existing structure can accommodate youth members. As part of an advisory board, youth can participate and advise the city council from their perspective. So the proposal for you this evening is to add membership to two different commissions, the Parks and Recreation Board, as well as the Bothell Arts Commission. These are recommended not only because these would be topics that we feel would be of interest for the youth, but also after talking with their staff liaisons, that they would be able to easily integrate, and they're ready and able to do so at this time. So in total, we are looking to add two youth positions to each of those boards. The idea behind having two youth members, it's recommended in order to have additional youth support as they're sitting amongst a group of adults, so that they can feel most welcome. Also, it's good practice to have an odd number of members on any board or commission. As proposed, the youth could apply between the ages of 14 to 17 years. They would follow the same established terms, which is three years at this time. And moreover, to ensure the success of our new youth members, the executive office will provide additional support along with the staff liaisons to ensure that they're able to incorporate and easily jump in to the structure. Staff would recommend that we monitor and report back to the council periodically on having these youth members on the first two boards. Beyond the appointment, some other future opportunities can include adding youth members to our other boards and commissions, maybe even host a youth forum, or even establish a youth commission in the future. So as you're aware, we're currently working on our new community engagement strategy, which we are looking to bring to council this spring at your goal-setting session in late March. So we'll look to get more council input on the strategy overall as a whole, and we will definitely be looking to include ideas around youth engagement. That concludes my presentation. The recommendation at this time is to approve tonight's ordinance to amend Chapters 2.44 and 2.45, expanding membership of the Parks and Recreation Board and Bothell Arts Commission to include youth members. Be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Councilmember Dewar.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question. So it sounds like you've spoken to the staff liaisons. Were the boards and commissions consulted and asked how they felt about having youth members on them?
We are proposing this without having had time to actually go and talk to these different boards. And it has to do with the timeline. We were trying to get the youth to be able to come in and do interviews. As you know, you're holding interviews for boards and commissions coming up in February. So we were trying to see if we could get them on the same track as that. So it was just shortened timeframe.
Yeah, I have concerns, just because I think we need to honor the boards and commissions and the people, the members that are on there. So that's one concern I have. The other is, rather than staff liaisons, I would propose that we have board and commission member liaisons, because then they'll be talking to their peers and not staff about board and commission business. I think that's a, to me, it seems more logical that they would be consulting with like a peer mentor on the board than staff, because I know how busy staff is and that their time is limited as well. So I'd be interested in hearing what the rest of the council thinks.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. And first of all, I'd like to really thank Assistant City Manager Kelly Mizoli and General Philip City Manager for the work on this. I think it's critically important, and our youth are very excited about this. I also have spoken to the staff from Parks and Recreation and Bothell Arts Commission, and they are very excited about doing this. And we met with James Johnson, who is the past president of Bothell High School. And he met with students from Bothell High School, he's now at the University of Washington, and they're very excited about this. This gives them what the goals that they had set for themselves, which is a voice, a student voice, in some very exciting opportunities in arts and parks, which they care a very lot about. It also educates them about city government and how city government works. And it's a really good introduction for them into, you know, contributing to the city and being a part of that. I really think this can be, if you have concerns, it can be, we can actually add or can subtract to it. But I think what we want to pass tonight is allowing them to be a voting member on the arts and the parks commissions. I want you to know that there's a lot of things that go on in Bothell, and I've heard this just recently again from actually your Sunday meeting and the people that attended. And what they say is, we do a lot of wine and beer, but we don't do a lot for our young people. And this is a great opportunity for them, so I hope you'll support it tonight.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Just a couple of things. One, I would love, kind of bouncing off what councilmember Dewar's concerned about having feedback from the boards and commissions, I think it would be wise, after a year of this, to get feedback from the adult members of the board on how it went, the good and the bad. I think that would be fair. I would also love to allow chair, probably the chair, or maybe they could appoint someone who could be a mentor with the kids and come along with, side with them, and help them come at it from a board member's point of view. So I would really encourage that. And then I have a question, is that I noticed that in the code that was written, it's on page 198 of our packet at the top on point number two, is that the youth members shall be 14, 15, 16, or 17 years of age at the same time of application, and the youth members shall have the same rights and responsibilities of general members. So does that mean they fall under OPMA? Do they have to go through the training? And how does the state look at that for somebody who's underage?
They would be full voting members. They would have the same rights and responsibilities, they would have to comply with OPMA.
Okay, regardless of age?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Councilmember Thompson.
I wasn't sure if I was supposed to wait for you to say something. Will, so when they begin their term, they'll be 14 through 17? Will they age out once they hit 18, or do we just assume that will happen naturally if they leave for college?
Yeah, so the idea was to make it as easy as possible to attract youth and young adults. And so, yes, if they were still here, maybe going to the UW-Bothell or Cascadia College, maybe they could continue serving those terms. So even if they applied at 17, then they might still serve up to 20. So no, they would not age out, according to the way this is written right now.
Okay. It's described in our packet as a pilot. Does that just mean we're trying it in these particular boards and commissions to see how it works? Or is there like an expiration date of this, or would this be moving forward from now?
There's no expiration date. Not to say, it could be expanded, it could be taken back. I mean, there's, at any time, council can make that decision, that it's not in the best interest, or it's not the advisory voice that they want. But yeah, it's a pilot program, meaning that we're only rolling it out to two of the commissions, that it wouldn't go out to all the different advisory commissions that the council has.
Okay. And just, I would also like to say, I like the idea of having people from boards and commissions be the kind of mentor. I think not only would that be good for the youth to get that perspective, but I also think it's a good leadership opportunity for people that are currently serving on boards and commissions.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yeah, I want to echo the appreciation for the work that we're doing as a council, as a city, as a community, to hear the voices of our young, our youth within the community. I think it's important that they have a voice, and I think that by way of being on a commission, sitting at the table and being able to vote, lets them believe that they do have that voice. And if we truly want to listen to them, we need to listen to them with an open mind. And I think them having that ability, without having, as we all say, you know, our kids, the people that yell at them all day long are adults. Let's let them be them, so that we get the true meaning of a youth voice sitting at the table. I also had that same question about aging out when they hit 20, an opportunity. And so if we have two that are on for three years, then are we really getting a good proportion within the youth in letting additional youth be on that, those boards and commissions? So three years seems like a long time, especially if you start at the age of 14 and go to, you know, three years to 17, or versus 17 to 20 or whatever. So I would be open, I definitely supportive of this, but I would think more opportunity for additional youth to be on it versus just two members there for three years, and then we don't get to hear from other members. So, but I'm supportive of it. I think it's a great that we're bringing this forward. And I want to thank councilmember McAuliffe for continuing her support of the youth within our community. We're in a good spot right now, Bothell. We're servicing our youth very well. I hear that, not only from, you know, my own kids that go to the North Shore School District, but from other parents on the things that we're doing locally here for open space and rec space for our kids. So it's important that we continue to do these things on our boards and commission, let them have a voice, because they're the ones who are going to advocate for what they want within our community.
So I'm in support of this. I think it's a great idea. Likewise, with councilmember Dewar, I would have liked to, you know, run it by the two boards before, you know, making this decision. But since we have the opportunity to do the interviews, pick the people, I think that, I trust that will make a good choice and, you know, pick people that will succeed and add additional energy to the board. So, and since, you know, it's a trial program, pilot program, you know, we have the ability to tweak it as we go on. So I'm looking forward to this. I'm looking forward to seeing who applies and what kind of prospects we get there, so.
Can I have a first? I have never made an amendment, so can you walk me through this, Paul?
I can sure try.
I would like to make an amendment to this, that we stagger the appointments on this so that we choose two upfront, but initially, one is one year and one is a three-year appointment, so that we have an alternating, we all...
We intentionally set it up that way so that we can work it in, so that we're not appointing both youth to three-year terms.
Is this in here, and I missed it?
It, go ahead.
Sorry, it's part of the process that you have, just like you have position numbers and you're not all up for election every two years.
Right.
And then staggered, that's already how it's done with the 1, 3, 5, and 7. So it would be 1, 3, 5, 7, 9, and 2, 4, 6, 8. So they'd be, they're automatically staggered.
Okay, perfect. Then scratch that. All right, thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
I would like to move that we adopt an ordinance to amend Chapters 2.44 and 2.45, 5, expanding the membership of the Parks and Recreation Board and Bothell Arts Commission to include youth members.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by councilmember McAuliffe, a second by councilmember McNeil. Any discussion?
I would only like to also add that our youth told us, James Johnson, kind of said this was a great opportunity for young people to put this on their resumes when they apply to colleges and universities. So it's another good step for them as well.
Councilmember Dewar.
I neglected to thank staff for their creative thinking. I know that councilmember McAuliffe has been really a proponent of a youth council, and I think this is a great first step, and I appreciate the creativity to get youth involved.
Yes, definitely. So, all right, looks like no more discussion, so place your vote. All right, looks like we have a unanimous with councilmember Agnew absent and excused.
I have a question about process. So we passed the main motion without doing the amendment. So shouldn't she have done an amendment after we made the motion for the...
She withdrew the amendment.
Oh, you withdrew it?
Yeah.
I missed that. I'm so sorry. Oh, got it, got it, sorry.
All right, it stands. Passes unanimous. All right. Onto, let's see, it looks like these are very similar topics, so we're gonna bring Lindsey, Lindsey Masters with Arch up to speak about AB 20, 20-009 and AB 20-10.
I'm sorry, I don't know how to pull it up. Hello. So I'm Lindsey Masters, I'm the executive manager of Arch, and we're here tonight to talk to you about a couple items. First is a carryover from late last year, which is the approval of our 2020 operating budget and work program. And then the second clause in the House, we'll be here to present recommendations for funding through the Housing Trust Fund for several projects. So I'll just get right started. This is the highlights of what we'll be covering in terms of recap of our work program, some highlights from the past work program that you approved for 2019, a big picture snapshot of what our regional impact is looking like so far, a little bit of a window into what were our activities in Bothell, and then a highlight of a lot of the focus work we've been doing on our homeownership program in the last year. Just as a recap, and for those of you that are new to Arch, Arch is an inter-local agency, so we were formed through inter-local agreement by a number of East King County cities and the county in the early 1990s, with the purpose being that we would be collaboratively working to pursue and promote affordable housing in East King County. And today, we've got 15 members, and the map that you see there is the geographic sphere of influence that we operate in. So we're structured to be governed by an executive board. This is how our members really come together and govern Arch. They provide oversight day-to-day of our operations. They make all of the key recommendations back to you regarding our work program, our budget, funding recommendations, as well as policy recommendations. And the executive board also appoints both members of our citizen advisory board, who also provide advice on funding and resource allocations, and they appoint what's known as our administering agency, which currently is the city of Bellevue. They provide a lot of our administrative support, and they're our fiscal agent. You have a particularly important role, you have a lot of ultimate authority in all of the policy and funding decisions at the local level. So on an annual basis, our agreement calls for you to approve anything that goes into our work program and our budget, and to approve any specific allocations to projects that we might recommend for you to fund. Then finally, there's the Arch staff. This is the engine of Arch. We are really extensions of your city staff. We see ourselves as... of your city staff. We see ourselves as basically housing staff to all these East King County cities. So we try to find ways to work collaboratively with you at the local level and also on regional efforts. So I'll recap briefly the four program areas that make up our work program, and I'll talk about some of the highlights in those four areas that occurred in 2019. So first and foremost, Arch has had a long history of investment in affordable housing. We, our model is that we pool funds from across jurisdictions to invest in projects year to year on a competitive basis. A large part of that work is coordinating our funding with other state resources, King County resources, and private, private investment. So in 2019, some of the highlights were, we had two projects that were completed and opened and occupied, a couple new projects that are now under construction. We released funding guidelines for approximately $6 million in funding. Those are the recommendations you'll be hearing about later. And we had a big funding round, nine applications in total, asking for about $19 million. So large, a large request in excess of the resources we had. It was a challenging round. And then we are continuing to coordinate with cities as well as transit agencies on a lot of opportunities to advance affordable housing on publicly owned property near, near transit. Just for those of you that appreciate a picture and a little bit of a snapshot, this was one of the projects that opened this year in Bellevue called 30 Bellevue Apartments, developed by Imagine Housing in partnership with St. Luke's Lutheran Church. A common, a common opportunity that we like to pursue is partnerships with faith communities. That has been a source of a lot of success for Arch. This particular project had 63 affordable homes. A large number of those were serving families coming out of homelessness. The other project that opened this year was a smaller development built by Habitat for Humanity, together with their volunteers, on land that was donated by the city of St. Mammish, and that's serving 10 families who were, who make on average about $50,000 a year, with an average purchase price of the home, because these are homeownership units of 232,000. Quite affordable. Another major milestone this year was finally the groundbreaking for the Women and Family Shelter to have a permanent year round facility for homeless women and families on the east side. A lot of support and another great partnership with the faith community. And then late last year, there was a groundbreaking of a larger project called Capella at Estera Park in the new Overlake neighborhood in Redmond, and a great partnership between Imagine Housing and Inland Group, going to create ultimately 261 units of affordable workforce housing. Set aside of those will be also for homeless, disabled, and large families. And a great collaboration also with the YMCA to promote an early learning facility on the ground floor. So there's a lot of time spent on investment, but we also do a lot of work on policy and planning. We are there to available to support cities' efforts to enact policies that are going to be helpful in promoting affordable housing. A lot of those are the adoption of incentive programs, either land use or tax, tax incentive programs. We also help administer those on the back end. So for example, in 2019, both Woodinville and Kenmore adopted a multifamily tax exemption program. I think we've got seven cities now that have put that in place. We were also really proud of the work that happened in Kenmore around manufactured housing community preservation. And we've been trying to do some work to advance conversations at the, at the state level about promoting tools that will help cities. And then finally, there was a new effort to stand up a subcommittee of the GMPC to work on affordable housing, and we are part of the staff that are supporting that. Our third area, as I mentioned, is that we help you administer housing programs once you have established them. So what that looks like is you, if you approve funding for a project, we develop the contracts and the covenants. Same thing for any land use project that has an incentive for affordable housing, we'll develop all the upfront documents and we'll do on the ongoing monitoring on the back end. And I'll get into a little bit more about the particular work we did on the homeownership program this year. The final program area that Arch has operated in for a number of years is education and public outreach. A big effort we did, worked on last year was an event with Eastside Interfaith Social Concerns Council to put on a workshop that would help promote the idea of faith communities working together with affordable housing providers. It's a pretty successful event, had a lot of turnout, a lot of interest, and I think we see some legislative opportunities coming out of that. We also just on a day to day basis are interacting with members of the public that are seeking affordable housing, helping to find what, where the opportunities are, helping them to navigate. That continues to be a really challenging aspect of the work for us because of the limited availability of those homes. So high level snapshot, just a few slides on where all this housing is being produced. This is a map of all the Housing Trust Fund projects that have been invested in over the last 25 plus years. Over 3,600 units total, and a portion of those are also shelter beds, and representing about $63 million in local investment, a lot of that of which is not necessarily cash investment, but is the donation of land and other, other things like fee waivers. This is a representation of the production we've seen under all those incentive and inclusionary zoning programs, which over time, the number of places that those apply has, has grown, which is great. You obviously see a lot more of that production spiking up in the last few years, where development activity has really started to pick up. And then this is sort of a picture of the affordability levels of what those programs have created and where they have, where those units have occurred. And we look forward to having some of those in Bothell soon. And generally, the big picture is that these are really flexible programs. They're tailored to your local priorities. So you see cities choosing to create units all the way at 50% AMI, up to 80 and 100% AMI. And if I'm using words like AMI that you want me to explain, feel free to, to chime in and interrupt me. This is just a quick snapshot of what has been accomplished in Bothell so far with Arch. There has been investment through the Housing Trust Fund in a handful of projects, and we continue to have relationships and monitor those. We also are excited about future opportunities to either invest in additional projects or administer some of the projects that come through your land use incentives, and possibly through a tax, tax incentive program if you decide to adopt that. We're also excited about exploring opportunities to put affordable housing on surplus property, and that's one of the projects we'll be highlighting tonight. And of course, we're always looking for ways to grow investment through the Housing Trust Fund. So just to step back a little bit to talk about our homeownership program, I think I was here a year, about a year ago, talking about the same thing and some of the plans we had in place to address the growth of issues as that program has matured. So we undertook a fairly rigorous assessment with the support of a consultant to look at every facet of the program, all of our policies and procedures, our staffing levels, and come up with kind of findings about how the program's performing and recommendations for bringing it up to best practices. So high level findings, there were some positive successes in who we are serving in the program, but clearly a need to increase the staffing to keep up with the growth in the units. Overall, I think we were slightly relieved that compliance violations weren't a large share of the program, still a small percentage, but still things we want to aggressively address. This just gives you kind of a visual picture of where our administrative budget has been and for the most part, constant staffing levels since 2000, as the number of units that we have been monitoring, which are represented by those two lines, has, has grown substantially in that same timeframe. So therefore, we are pleased to have been able to add a couple of staff positions last year. That was the first recommendation of the assessment. Number, first and foremost, before we could add a bunch of new procedures and policies, we needed the staff to be able to implement that. So that was the number one recommendation. We had a number of other detailed recommendations, which I think are in your materials, around strengthening some of our policies around enforcement, updating our systems to new technology, et cetera. So some of that you'll see here highlighted in our 2020 work program and budget. So the budget includes the continuation of those two new staff positions, which our board authorized on an interim basis with one time resources. Those two positions have been hired. One is focused on rental compliance and one is focused on homeownership administration. We also added some capacity to bring on student interns to help, help with our overall capacity as well. We have purchased new software licenses to be able to upgrade our database for the program, which is weedy, but, but really a big, big deal for us. And then we have some small changes in our consultant budget to be able to support those database upgrades. So those are just the highlights of things that are new and different. In 2020, the rest of our budget looks largely the same. And then for the work program, we had, again, a really robust conversation with the board about what are our priorities for the year? What are the things we want to make sure? In the long list of things we could do to work on affordable housing, what do we want to make sure we spend time on? Number one was obviously continuing to try to excel at stewardship of the affordable housing we've already created. Number two was trying to set out some markers for future growth and production, which means developing measurable goals, something Arch has not done up till now. We also want to start championing a plan to promote transit oriented development across the east side. Don't exactly know what form that's going to take, but it's something with, that has been a priority. We want to continue to talk about how we're going to fund all these projects and explore the top potential revenue sources for those at the local level. And then a commitment on our board's behalf is looking at not just our capacity to steward affordable housing, but also to perform all those other functions across, across the work program. So that's something the board has taken on as a lead up to developing our 2021 budget. You may recall, each city has an opportunity to highlight things in our work program. They would like us to support and work with you on. And so this is a highlight of things that came from the city of Bothell. And then finally, just high level snapshot of what the budget request is for Bothell from 2019 over to 2020. And that increased largely is the reflecting the additional staffing that was recommended. This is a same snapshot of contributions through the Housing Trust Fund. So what was contributed in 2018 and 2019. Each year, we establish what are called parity goals to try to set some benchmarks. The contributions are always 100% voluntary, so it's whatever city can afford in a particular year, but we try to create some sense of a goal. And that goal can be either through, again, direct contributions or other forms of support like land. And with that, I'm going to shift over to our recommendations for Housing Trust Fund projects.
Good evening. My name is Klaus Niasse. I am a planner at Arch. And this year, we had, as Lindsay mentioned, nine projects apply to us for a request of about $19 million. We didn't have that. And we did have a large slate of good projects, and the ones that were teased out by first our citizen advisory board and some input by our member staffs, as well as in the final recommendation being adopted by our executive board to present to you, is five projects. I'm going to go through those. The first one is in your city, and it is a proposal by Imagine Housing for 54 units of senior housing, located right next to the Bothell Landing and sort of a nice walk away from the country's second largest senior center. So appropriate use of the space, which allows for development of smaller units, maybe allowing for some reduced parking capacity, and which fits the point system for some of the largest pots of resources available, namely the housing trust, the low income housing tax credits. So there will be some set asides for veterans and homeless as proposed in this project. And we are recommending a funding of 750,000 at this time to allow the acquisition of the site. And we appreciate that the city is making the site available to Imagine Housing at, at a very nice price. 750 isn't going to be the total ask for this project. This is probably going to be coming back to us in, in the coming years, but it allows it to proceed and, and advance. The next project is one that our member cities have already invested 700,000 in, and that's the Eastside Men's Shelter. When they made that investment in 2014, it was envisioned to be a 50 bed shelter and associated days, at day center space. Their needs have grown. It's now 100 bed you, project. They have located a site. The site is owned by King County, and the site is going to have to be disposed of at fair market value. It's a 10 acre site. The shelter needs a small portion of that, maybe 1/20. So we've been looking at developing a partnership for the remainder of the site's development. Here, we're recommending 500,000 additional to the shelter, and that's with their other sources that they have in hand, plus their commitments in capital campaign should realize this project. What it doesn't do is realize the acquisition. So hand in hand with this project is a market rate and nonprofit partnership that will produce a number of affordable units, 298 units adjacent to the site of the shelter, and it will also still allow for future development of some permanent supportive housing on the site as well. Polaris at East Gate is proposed by Inland Group. They are a for profit developer that has the capacity, because of being vertically integrated, to deliver units at a very cost effective price. And they also have the capacity to, to help take down the site and secure it for the shelter. So the recommendation here is not, again, for full funding, but partial funding to demonstrate to other funders our commitment moving forward with this project, and that funding recommendation is $575,000. The third project you're looking at is the redevelopment of Together Center. This has been the dream of the Together Center Board for quite a long time, to utilize the space above our one story service mall for the delivery of human services. And the project here is also in two phases. One is a 9% tax credit phase. 9% tax credits are the high, high yield investment in affordable housing for predominantly lower income households. And it's very competitive, and we try to achieve one of those projects on the east side. On, on every year basis, we've been able to get a project like this every two years, it seems like. We're competing against the bigger pockets of Seattle, but this project, the way it's configured, allows us to tap into the 9% resources and co-locate it with that 9% project, which is eight units predominantly, 75% will be for homeless households, is a 4% tax credit project of 204 units that will be built hopefully at the same time. But if the 4% project can't secure its tax credits in this year, it can be phased. This will be This will be in Redmond, so um combined total of 284 affordable units as product of this work. Then we have two individual projects from one of our um beloved uh um agencies, um Community Homes Incorporated. They do group homes for uh individuals living with developmental disabilities. You have a home in your community that uh is sponsored by them, and they are proposing to do two more homes, another adult family home, which houses five uh persons living with developmental disabilities. And then they're looking at another model, which is a shared living home. In both of these situations, it's not uh staffed by, round-the-clock by uh waves of caregivers coming in. These are staffed by live-in caregivers. Um, and it's a real tight family situation that we've experienced uh Community Homes delivering. They have a site for the shared home in Newcastle, and we'll be looking around the um the East King County area, the art sphere of influence for the other home, and likely it could, again, land in Bothell. So those are the applications this year. Any questions about them? Anything I can clarify for you?
Questions? Councilmember Dewar?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I was curious, um, because amongst the projects you had talked about, one that was affordable rental housing, and I wondered how the funding is different with that, um, because we've talked about the need for affordable workforce housing in Bothell. And of course, we're getting a senior housing project. So I'm just curious how those decisions are made and how the projects are differently funded.
So all the projects are technically, except for the shelter, uh rental housing projects, but did you mean senior versus family housing?
Yeah, and you, I think you mentioned workforce housing. I'm sorry, I I should clarify. You had mentioned one of the projects was workforce housing, and that's what I'm particularly interested in.
Okay. So workforce housing is uh targeting at higher income levels, still uh lower income levels, but higher than uh the other types of housing that we produce. Typically, it's at uh 60% of area median incomes for the households to qualify. And uh there's a component of that in both the Together Center, as well as in the East Gate Polaris project. And then the project that's anticipated for uh Bothell, the SAMA project, is a senior project based on the scale of units that can be actually physically built on that site, the magnitude, the number of units that have to be achieved in order to uh advance a tax credit application, and all the burden of uh creating those partnerships, uh quite quite an extensive legal burden for the project team. And then the decision about uh moving that to s- um senior housing is based on points given for tax credits favoring homelessness, uh first and foremost, uh large families and seniors and disabled individuals. So uh making this a senior project lands it within the range where it would score to get the other equity pieces that the project needs.
So it's based on the size of the project mainly, it sounds like?
The size of the project, yes. It needs to be of a certain scale, um a tax credit deal. Sort of at the bottom of the range is 50 units. Ideally, uh in these days, we'd like to see a project of 90 units. On your um on your Bothell Way site, a 90-unit project is just physically impossible to create. Uh, and and 50 units, we have to do by doing very small units.
Thanks. I was just curious because I'm, I feel like it's a lost opportunity for workforce housing, being that it's on a coming BRT line. And so I was just kind of curious how those those decisions were made. Thank you.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yeah, um, early on in the presentation, you mentioned that you promote land use decisions to incentivize affordable housing. Um, what land use decisions do you see as being the most impactful to create affordable housing in the community, or what do you see as the most likely land decisions we could make in Bothell to attract more investment from Arch?
Sure. I mean, I think it's a couple, a couple of uh thrusts that are related. Um, first is just creating enough land that's available for multifamily development. Um, and I think part and parcel with that is making sure you're capturing all the value of the development capacity you're giving back for affordability. Um, and so it's exciting that you have an inclusionary zoning framework in place now. I think the more places that you can apply it and the more development capacity you can create and capture that value back, the the more impact you'll have.
Are there any other factors that you see, aside from inclusionary zoning?
Uh, after after those two, it becomes a really long list of things that you could do, um, just from the the speed and efficiency of permitting, parking requirements, the cost of fees and what you are and aren't willing to waive, like things that all drive the cost of development, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Deputy Mayor Zorn?
This is just, um, I have to tell you, going over this in our packet, it was just like, oh, I don't know. It was such an encouraging thing to read. I just, you just put me, I had, I got a good hit of endorphins. It just, just really, I just really enjoyed seeing the broad spectrum that you are thoughtfully addressing, um, from creating new housing to, you know, focusing on renting or buying or um adult family homes, transi- transitional housing. I was just, I was just thrilled going through it. Um, I do have one question because I saw that, and it, and this is just a neighbor for Bothell. I saw that um in Juanita, not in Juanita, in Kirkland. I've just done a brain dump, and I know this organization, that there's some rehab, Kirkland Heights. Can, it's getting some rehab done? But I saw that it used to be, did it used to be owned by the Machinist Union? And that was a curiosity. How did a Machinist Union come to own Kirkland Heights?
So the Machinist Union uh uses, I presume, its pension funds uh to invest in um real estate, and that's not uncommon. Um, they did invest in Kirkland Heights and another uh project in Kirkland as well. And at this point in time, they want to get out of that business, and they've courted the King County Housing Authority to take over the management and the 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 actual ownership of those projects. There are five in total within King County that uh they have um shifted over to King County Housing Authority. King County Housing Authority did come to us for uh funding. They wanted $2 million. But just as we received their application, uh, we saw the public announcement that Microsoft offered them, I believe, $60 million to um to advance those projects. So our funds were, could have been used, but uh, uh, you know, we were relieved that we can make them available to other projects.
And Microsoft is is still maintaining and keeping Kirkland Heights.
King County Housing.
Oh, King County Housing is because of Microsoft money.
Correct.
That's amazing. Um, and then, and then the housing for uh developmentally disabled adults.
Yes.
Super important. Can you tell me about the level of need for that?
So the level of need uh spans from uh the very difficult to to provide housing for to those who are living unable to uh function, normal lives, persons living with Down syndrome, for example. So it's a broad spectrum. We have worked with four agencies that provide this kind of housing. Community Homes does the model with uh adult family homes, where there's a live-in care provider, and the housing needs of those individuals that they take care of are within the spectrum of, let's say, Down syndrome. So uh you will see them as your checkers at the QFC or um otherwise engaged in 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 work around the community. They pay rent, uh, and they have meaningful lives. What they don't have is parents who can continue to take care of them, and that's where the need is for uh the broad population at that side of the spectrum. On the other side of the spectrum are people who were formerly institutionalized with the Olmstead Act. They said, no, they need to be integrated in the communities. So through agencies, as uh Foundation for the Challenged and uh Parkview, we provide um home settings for those individuals, and those are serviced by um caregivers who come in in eight-hour shifts, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year.
To help monitor and provide the medical needs that they need and all.
Everything, yeah. They they tend not to be able to uh do much more than, um, you know, um, a little bit of social integration.
Right. Well, thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you. Um, I just have a few questions, and I guess one of them is um how, what are the steps that are taken for the homeless to actually come to a purchase price? Is there, what kind of assistance do they receive?
Can you repeat that one more time?
What kind of assistance does a homeless receive in order to get to the purchase price of a of a unit? I mean, if they're homeless and they're going to be kind of brought into a unit, who helps them?
I see, okay. You you can.
Okay, sure. Okay. So typically, it's not homeownership for um the homeless. They may move and and advance into homeownership. Probably there's several intermediate steps. Immediately to get homeless off the off the streets, we provide shelter. After that, we provide very heavily subsidized housing, where they pay no in, um, no rent to a modest portion of their income. The rest is subsidized through rental subsidies, and uh the basic price of the home is reduced by uh the the public subsidies that go into the capital budget. So um the only costs in those projects are the expenses associated with running a project, management, uh insurance, utilities, that sort of thing. So it it becomes a less costly enterprise for the agency to take that on. And the homeless, um, they try to um encourage, although in just about all our projects, there's no requirement to be engaged in um in, what's the word I'm looking for? Case management, uh, but through case management and other services provided, there's the uh the desire to reintegrate them and get them into uh work and the ability to take care of themselves.
Thank you.
Was that your question?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
And my second question would be, um, how are individuals with developmentally disabilities um selected to be come to enter into these homes? Is there a selection process, or how are they identified?
So it it depends. Sometimes the state identifies the individuals that come to the homes, and sometimes they uh appeal to the agency. Uh, and uh so it 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 varies, but um it generally, it's available to anyone um who who seeks and desires it, limited, of course, by the number of units that are available.
And since I was in the Senate at the time when we actually uh passed the laws that allowed, that encouraged these individuals who are developmentally disabled to go into these group homes, I know the demand is great and the services are greatly needed. So I want to really compliment you and your people for providing that. I know there's a great need. And finally, I just have one last question, and is that the Redmond site, is that going to be the Redmond Town Center?
No, that is the Together Center.
Oh.
If you're familiar with the um Human Services uh Mall that is opposite the Bella Batega Shopping Center, that is the Together Center right now. It's a one-story, probably built in the 70s, shopping mall converted to um offices for the delivery of services. Those offices will be rebuilt on the ground floor, so they they will remain, and uh will be accessible by the residents that live above that need those services as well, as well as the 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 general community.
I just really want to uh compliment Arch and all the work that goes into helping these individuals. Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil?
Got that right. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I had some questions around the services and the and the the types of projects that we're we're doing. Um, are those projects servicing the needs within those communities, or, uh, for instance, the project that we're looking at in Bothell, seems like it's for seniors. Are are we servicing people that are currently in Bothell, or are we servicing just people regionally?
Well, Arch is a regional effort that you all invest in, and we encourage um the the developers to reach out and do uh active um recruitment for residents within the communities in which the projects are built ahead of uh sort of a general announcement. They are governed by uh fair housing laws, so they really can't discriminate uh by the community folks come from. But we feel that the strategy of giving an early heads-up to residents who might need that type of housing within the communities that the housing is built gives an advantage to the communities.
Fabulous. And then, um, what type of housing are we looking at for youth, people that age out of foster care, for instance?
We haven't, well, last year we received an application from Friends of Youth, but they decided not to move forward with it. So we didn't have a project to present last year. But we've been doing probably eight or nine projects with Friends of Youth um that uh spanned the spectrum from homeless housing for individuals aged 14, all the way to those that get, um, you know, that are aged out of the system, as as it were. So we recently, I believe in 2013, built a couple of homes that each accommodate five um 18-plus um year-old homeless youth. So we get, we build it as we can. The unfortunate thing is those projects are smaller, so they can't access uh the low-income housing tax credits, which means that uh to do projects like that, we need to do a much larger share of local uh local state and and county funds.
Fabulous. Well, I also want to echo and applaud you for the work that you're doing. Um, I have the opportunity to sit on the RPC, and one of the things that we hear is the different types of homelessness that we have across our region, uh, the the definite need for affordable housing across our region. Um, and I look forward to continuing to work with you and finding ways that we can together build that affordable housing. Um, you know, I think I'm hearing numbers of a million new people coming here by 2050, um, and I think it's going to be important for us to find ways to find that land, to create that affordable housing and those partnerships, not only with Arch, but the for-profit business as well, uh, to create that opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Uh, so Assistant City Manager Mizoli. Uh, so we had these two agenda bills, and we kind of mashed them together here. So I wasn't sure I really saw for our second one, 20-010, about the 89 and the 33 as part of the presentation or specifically broken out. Was there any additional information? Because I know we spoke about in the packet a little bit, but.
Yes. Uh, so that would be the contribution that they're requesting from the city of Bothell is what's included in your packet. Um, and what they provided this evening was a high-level overview of all the different projects that'll be funded by um proportionally among all the different agencies. So um the, if you look in your, uh, on your agenda bills, in the recommended action, it outlines on each of those um the the way forward. So uh if you were to take the trust fund first. It is the, sorry, uh, adopt the proposed resolution to approve the 2019 Fall Housing Trust Fund recommendations in the amount of 88,970, uh, to be drawn from previously committed funds by the city of Bothell to the Arch Housing Trust Fund.
I recommend that we move the recommended action, second.
Prove the recommended action.
All right. We have a a motion by Deputy Mayor Zorn, the second by uh Councilmember Dewar, uh, to adopt the proposed resolution to approve the 2019 Fall Housing Trust Fund recommendations in the amount of 88,970 to be drawn from previously committed funds by the city of Bothell to the Arch Housing Trust Fund. Any discussion? Councilmember McNeil?
Yes, um, I I have a clarifying question. I wanted to know if this had actually come to us before and we. I wanted to know if this had actually come to us before and we postponed this because of another issue. I'm not sure if I remember this was the exact one.
No, these have not come before you.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Any other discussion? All right. Place your vote. Looks like we passed unanimously with Councilmember Agnew absent and excused. And then, so our second agenda bill as part of this presentation was AB 20-010.
I move the Recommended Action.
Second.
All right. We have Councilmember Dewar. And with the motion, Councilmember McAuliffe with the second to approve, approve the proposed resolution to adopt the Arch 2020 Work Program and Budget and authorizing payment of city funds for Arch 2020 membership dues and a housing trust contribution in the amounts of 89,384 and 33,616, respectively. Any discussion? If none, place your vote. And we passed unanimously with Councilmember Agnew absent and excused. Thank you very much for your presentation tonight. So I think we, did we have the earlier presentation or the piece? Nope?
Yes, we do, Mayor.
Yes.
If you'd like to take that now, and then we would go on to the MFTE presentation after that.
Yeah, if we could do the special presentation, North Shore School District Capital Facilities. I think we just kind of charged forward and almost forgot about it a little bit. So, sorry. Thanks for waiting.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, members of the council. So tonight, I'm going to be presenting along with Joe Paperman from the North Shore School District. Excuse me. Mr. Paperman is the Chief Operating Officer for the district. And we also have Dre Ralph here from the district, who's the capital facilities manager. Something close enough to that, anyway. Last month, I had sent the council some information about proposed amendment to the countywide planning policies for King County. And a couple of council members had requested some information back on that. So Mr. Paperman and I are here tonight to just provide you an overview of some of the things that the city and the district are working on together relative to the, the best practices that were proposed for those countywide planning policies. So with that, we've got a brief presentation that we'll run through and then answer any questions that you might have. So tonight is just information only. There's no action being requested. We just want to recap. Mr. Paperman will recap some recent and current district projects. This is a refresher, similar to what he went over with the impact fee discussion last month. Then I'll give you a quick overview of what's proposed as far as the King County Countywide Planning Policies, best practices, and then talk about some of the things that, that we're doing now jointly with the school district and some of the things that we'll be working on in the future. So with that, I will turn it over to Joe to go through a couple of slides.
Sure. Thanks very much. So, yeah, we went through most of these, I guess that was about a month ago when we were talking about impact fees. We, we've got on this slide sort of our big-ticket items, our big-capacity items. We have our new elementary school, which the week after I was here, we now have a name for it, is now Ruby Bridges Elementary School. So we're proud to have that, which will be opening next year. We have our middle school, middle school and elementary addition at Skyview Canyon Creek, which is going to be opening its doors, I believe, next week, Tuesday. Dre's been getting that one ready, so we'll start moving students in fairly soon. We have our new concert hall, which we're looking at hopefully opening 2021. Our new high school, which I think we're still not quite naming yet, but we're sort of starting to refer to it as Innovation High School, opening up potentially September 2020, as we're working through that process. And then eventually, we, we have on the boards a, a new middle school out at our site where the new elementary, Ruby Bridges, just opened up. That one would be our, our 2024 probably opening. We'd probably look at that. Yeah, I would say in addition to these, these are sort of the big-ticket items. We've also got multiple other items. We have about $12 million of security projects on our most recent bond. Currently, we're looking at replacing locks, but that'll move into cameras and access systems. We put in, I think, four new playfields last summer. We're looking at two new playfields this summer. Multiple carpeting and flooring projects, painting projects. We had, I think, two $5 million HVAC where we're upgrading and renovating systems to make them more efficient, more comfortable. So, so these are the big-ticket items, but we've got lots of other projects going on, both inside Bothell and outside Bothell. Yeah, the, the biggest issue we're really facing, the, the biggest dollar amount is just dealing with our capacity. We've, we've had tremendous growth. Last year, we were sort of surprised. We grew 300 students in 2019. And I believe across the entire King County area, the, the total growth, all the school districts was 12 students. So we got 300 of the 12. Other districts declined. We're seeing continued growth. Other districts are bouncing back this year, but we've just seen steady growth. And we don't think that's going to stop in the, the short term. Looking out about six years, we're expecting our high school enrollment to increase by right around 1,200 to 1,500 students. So that's, yeah, and I think we've got 300 empty seats at our high schools right now. So we're looking at new projects there and other expansion. So, so we've got a lot of projects to go in, in the future and will be. And a lot of that growth is coming in the Bothell area. So a lot of that growth is going to be targeted toward Bothell.
So the King County Council approved some amendments to the countywide planning policies. They're not actually policy amendments. They're simply best practices. So they're sort of the narrative that goes along with some existing policies that were adopted a few years ago by the county and ratified by all the jurisdictions. And that refers to the Public Facilities Policy 19A, which requires the cities and the districts to communicate with each other every, at least every two years. That was something that was not necessarily happening throughout the county. So this was to address a lot of the school siting issues. With all the growth that's been occurring, it's been more and more difficult and more expensive for districts to cite schools. There are just not a lot of land available, and the land that is available is very expensive typically. So the county was trying to create a, a dialogue whereby we could start to address some of those issues and hopefully facilitate more of the development of schools within the urban area, rather than see some of them go out to the rural areas, which is what was happening. So again, every two years, the, we meet. We talk about shared public facilities, opportunities, acquisition and lease of available public lands, any regulatory changes that might be needed to facilitate the development of schools, as well as design standards that may reduce some of the land requirements, many of which, as I understand, are dictated by the State Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction. So we have some latitude with that, but some of it is also driven by state. So that's a King Countywide policy. There are similar policies in Snohomish County's countywide policies, because we have to abide by both. They're not as specific, though. They're much more general and just talk about, you know, cooperation among different agencies and, and entities. So the 10 best practices that, that were up for approval have to do with surplus public properties, assisting with identifying private properties that might be available for school use, opportunities for shared use, which it's, it sounds like a good idea, sounds very simple on its face. It's not something that typically is easy to do, particularly with playfields, because they tend to be used almost all the time by the school districts. And city parks and recreational facilities, the same way. They're very, very highly programmed. It's not to say it can't happen, it's just not usually quite as straightforward as, as it may seem. Look for options for mixed-use development, including schools. That's something I think we'd certainly be willing to look into. I'm not aware of any of those that exist in this region, but they're certainly a possibility. And I think with the, the project you're doing in Canyon Park right now, the innovative high school, that's taking and reusing an existing building. So the, that's another, another way to kind of look at some options there. And then modifications to regulations and processes to make challenging sites feasible. Certainly something that we're open to. That's another item that would come to the council as a docket item, if you wanted us to look at some changes regarding regulations of schools in particular. Broadening the number of zones that permit schools. Right now, most of our, all of our residential zones and a couple of our commercial zones allow schools, but as a conditional use. So it has to go through the Hearing Examiner and Conditional Use Permit process. Adds time and cost and, and some uncertainty in some cases. And then we allow them outright in the other zones in the city. So the light industrial zone and a couple of the other commercial zones as well. Again, that's a policy decision for the council. If you ever wanted to change that, that's something that, that could be looked at. Coordinating our permit process to shorten and improve certainty. All of our applicants would like that. We do the best that we can. We try to streamline and look for those things that we can do, and we're always working on that, including with the district and their projects. One of the things that we, we try to do with some of the projects that are a little more complex, and many of the school district projects are a little more complex because of the specialty of the use, is we try to, we're, we're trying to improve our communication and do that a little more frequently, a little more upfront on those projects. TDM, those, that's Traffic Demand, or Transportation Demand Management Protocols to encourage alternative transportation, reduce parking. That's something we could certainly work with the district on. I don't believe you have a TDM program right now, but we do work on those in the city. And then partnering and planning and financing walk-and-bike routes is appropriate. So we do coordinate on our safe streets and sidewalk projects. The school district has input as we work on prioritizing those. The district is involved in, in helping to set those priorities. Also, when we have development projects that come in that are required to provide walk routes or sidewalks or bike lane improvements, those kinds of things, the school district is usually involved in the review and coordination on that or, or providing some comments on that. We do currently share space with the maintenance facility, the, I believe it's the repair, repair bay at the school district's bus base. Sharing growth data, we've, we do that on a fairly regular basis. It's a little more informal, usually based on a request for information. That's something we can work on formalizing some more. Communicating on projects earlier and more frequently. I, I mentioned the biannual meeting that's required. I also mentioned, I think this year is when we're required to do that. Issues, strategies to be identified that would come out of that meeting. So if there are particular challenges that the district is having, whether it's with Bothell or other jurisdictions, that's where we share that information and we look at ways that we can try to address that. So those, again, will be tasks, if it's a code amendment, that would come before the council in terms of a docket item. And then the last item, I'll let Joe talk about some more, that's a master plan that they're talking about doing for all of their facilities.
Yes. So we're, we're just embarking on a facilities master plan. I almost think of it as our strategic capital plan, where we're going to be looking at a 20-year cycle of where we see growth, condition, needs, et cetera. So starting to build up more of a cycle rather than waiting at every four years, doing our next bond planning to sort of get five or six bond cycles set up in advance. And we'll be starting that process fairly soon, and we'll probably get some people from the city involved in helping with that.
And I think that's really the overview that we wanted to provide you, and certainly happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Deputy Mayor Zorn?
Just a quick question. Did I see a scheduled meeting twice a year? Is that the two planning departments, you know, planning departments? Or is that board and council? It was on the last slide.
The...
There was...
That...
Or maybe, maybe it was a slide before. I don't know. Was there somewhere?
Schedule a biannual meeting?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
That's the one that's required by the countywide planning policies, and that's a staff-to-staff meeting.
Okay.
So it's the school district. Usually, the district sets it up because they're serving several cities. And so we all get together at the same time, the, the cities that are served by that district as well as the county, and talk about what issues the district has been facing in terms of trying to develop schools.
So are you...
Every two years.
Are you all, oh, it's in every two years? Okay. You're right. And, and are all the cities there at the table together? So you're hearing what's going on district-wide?
Yeah. So we're, we're setting that up for the first time this year, and we're looking at not only the cities, but the two counties, so all five jurisdictions, I think, at the same time just to get some economies of scale and also for everybody to hear the concerns across the school district.
Okay. And every two years? Okay.
And fortunately for Bothell and for me and my staff, we only have one school district in Bothell.
Yes, that is nice.
I've worked in other cities that have four school districts, so there are a lot more meetings.
Yeah. Although, did, do we have a little bit of, uh, the Kirkland School District in the City of Bothell? Or do we not? For some reason, someone was telling me, there was a little piece of Bothell that was in that district.
That's entirely possible. I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'll have to check on that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. And first of all, Joe, I'm very excited about the Ruby Bridges Elementary School being named after such a really historian that we might all bring forward. The, I think the dedication she had to really equity. And, and that's September 2020. Innovation High School, I'm sorry, I wrote down September 2020. Is that correct?
That's what we're working towards. We're, we're trying to hit that target date, so...
And where, where is that location?
It's in the Canyon Park Business Park.
Oh, excellent.
Just up the street a little way.
Okay. And then on, let's see, you, you spoke a little bit about schools in the urban areas versus the rural area. And so I was always acquainted with the fact that you have the GMA in place that's, there's always that battle about where schools are going to be cited. So I guess I just want you to speak a little bit more about that.
Yeah. So in general, the, we're supposed to be building in urban areas, and schools are supposed to be cited in urban areas. And King County has been pretty strict on that, wanting schools within urban areas. Snohomish County has been a little more open to allowing, you know, use outside of the urban area. So Ruby Bridges is outside the UGMA. Portions of North Creek High School were actually outside the UGMA. So in Snohomish County, we can, we can do it outside. If, if there's a site that makes sense and, you know, we don't, we've, if there's not a lot of population there, then we're bussing long distances, you know, students can't walk to the school.
Right.
So we try and get it as close as we can to where the students are, but just depending on where sites are available.
Right. So if they build in the rural area, then there's no housing that can be built around them, though? Is that correct?
Not on our grounds. I would, you know, I think in Snohomish County, we have an expectation that in the not-too-distant future, the urban growth boundary is going to move, and probably Ruby Bridges would be inside the urban growth boundary, and we would see an expansion at that point.
So that's what you're somewhat working towards with this, as a school district?
Yeah. We, well, we know we need to be ready for it. We've seen estimates of upwards of 6,000 more students coming to our district when that boundary moves over the neck, between now and 2035. And for 6,000 students, we're going to have to do significant construction. So we need sites, we need locations.
Absolutely. And I know how expensive it is to be in the urban area. So one other question about, you spoke about broaden the number of zones permitting schools. Can you speak about number of zones, what, what you're asking for at that point?
I, I don't, there's not a specific request at this time. I think it's just in general. Some cities don't allow schools in all zones. Most cities, I think, are very similar to Bothell in that the zones, most of the zones where we do allow them, they go through a Conditional Use Permit process. So in our case, it would be looking at whether or not they should still go through the, the Conditional Use process or just allow them outright or subject to predetermined conditions, something along those lines. That would be one way that we could provide a little bit more certainty, a little less process and time for, for some of those permits.
Right.
One of the things I missed mentioning earlier in one of those 10 had to do with coordinating a phased review. And that was really getting at the portables, because I know that's, that's a big issue for every school district that I've ever worked with. And it's a, it's a challenge for the district because they don't necessarily know where they're going to need portables until just a couple of months before school starts. So one of the things that we've had in the past in Bothell was interlocal agreement between the school district and the city. And the, the district essentially did what I would call a master plan ahead of time for where they thought they might need those in the future, so they would be placed, that we'd have the site plans all approved ahead of time, so that would streamline the process for actually locating the portables when they're needed. We don't have that in place right now, but that's something that if the district is interested and we have the capacity in the city, we could look at something like that in the future. I think that's, that's one of those sticking points that comes up on a regular basis.
Right. And then that gives me number nine, to cooperate on TDM protocols. Are we working toward that? Or is that something we still need to be doing?
We're not doing anything on that currently. We do, at the city, we work on that, and we have several large employers that we work with on that. But it's really up to, at this point, it'd be up to the school district to decide if that's something that, that they wanted to pursue.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Councilmember, Councilmember McNeil?
Get in, Mayor. You got to get in. Thank you, Mayor. So my question, actually first, to... So my question, actually first to Deputy Mayor Zorn's. Interesting that the district has kids that live in Kirkland, live in Woodenville, Bothell, Kenmore, that all attend North Shore School District. Is that correct?
I'm not aware of Kirkland. I know we have students in, you know, Woodman, excuse me, Woodenville, Kenmore, and Bothell are all within the district. And then we also have areas of unincorporated Snohomish and unincorporated King County. But I'm not aware of any, they might have a Kirkland postal code, but I'm not aware of them living within Kirkland city limits.
Kirkland Addresses attend, there's actually kids that attend Inglemore Feeder that live in Kirk, it's just, it's bizarre to me, but it's, yeah, it's, they live in the new annexation area of Bothell over there by North Shore, up behind North Shore Middle School. So that's one of the things, the questions that I have is around how we look at building new facilities in the school district. And one of the things that intrigues me is, do we have the ability to go taller on these schools that are within our cities?
So that is one thing. I think when Michael was talking about some of the changes in zoning that we might, or ask for, or some of the permits would be, we've got pretty rurally designed schools, you know, single floor, multiple buildings, multiple access points. And as we look at having to add capacity, if we can't get additional sites, then we're sort of stuck with, how do we get more capacity on existing sites? And in those cases, we'd probably be coming forward and looking for variances to be able to go up higher than current zoning might permit to go up multiple floors. Our newest building, Ruby Bridges, is a three-story building. And not just for capacity reasons, but we're also finding for security reasons, currently having three or four buildings with multiple access points is no longer a desirable trait, you know, as things have changed in our world, so.
Yeah, it's interesting, I was having a conversation with Jack McLeod with the Bellevue School District about that exact thing today. One of the things that I just wanted to point out is when we do the redistricting boundaries that we do, a lot of times there's kids that are going to one school that are now moved to another school. And when you, we do those things, those kids lose their friendships that they've had for a few years. At a young age, that really is impactful. So I just wanted to bring that up. It's something to think about when we're, when we're doing these new facilities, thinking about how we're changing those districting and things like that, because it does affect our community. As an example, I live in Bothell, but my kids will attend school in, at Kenmore, at Inglemore High School. So we're all connected, all of our communities here in the North Shore area. So it's important that we all have that, that open communication and dialogue, so thank you.
And I think, and I know this year when we did our reboundering, that'll hit next year with the new school going in. One of the concerns that we went to principals with was at least two years in advance of starting to identify for them. Here are the students at Fernwood that in two years will be at, you know, Ruby Bridges. And, you know, when you're setting up your second grade class, can you try and get these kids together in second grade so they'll be in third grade together and then they'll all move together so that it isn't two kids moving that have never been in a class with other kids? So we're trying to work on those to try and lighten it. We know there's an impact from that.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. It's great to see that. There is a lot of collaboration. All right, on to AB 20-011, study session for multifamily tax exemption program.
So I am not doing the presentation, but I will introduce Mike Stanger from Arch. This is the, I think we're hearing from a large number of Arch staff tonight. It's Arch night, yes. So this is the multifamily tax exemption. This is the first briefing for the council. And Mike's going to walk you through that and ask for some direction for some things on the policy side of this so that we can move forward in developing the necessary code amendments. This is not, Councilmember Thompson asked earlier of Ms. Masters about land use changes that we can do that would be impactful. This is one of the non-land use actions that are going to be impactful because it's a, it's a tax benefit basically to developers for providing affordable housing. And it's something that was on the council's strategy that you adopted in 2018 and was on the docket for last year. So we've been working toward this point to bring this to you for some initial discussion and then we hope to bring the final version back to you for action later in the first quarter, early in the second quarter. So with that, I will turn it over to Mike Stanger.
Either one, either one. Hello? As Mike said, my name's Mike Stanger. I'm a planner at Arch and it's very exciting to help you kick off this, this project to study MFTE, as we like to call it. What we'll do tonight is, I know that most or all of you have some level of familiarity with MFT already, but I'll just provide a quick overview of what your opportunities are under the law to do that. And then to help you begin to think about how to answer the policy questions that go along with this process, I'll step through a little bit of an update on the housing needs of the community. And then we'll wrap up the presentation with a look at what we anticipate the scheduling or the process will look like. If I use any jargon or acronyms or anything like that, please feel free to interrupt me and ask me to clarify. As Mike Cotterman said, this is an anti, a, an area, a project that we anticipated bringing to you for consideration, the council has asked for and fit into your housing strategy. So in the, in the context of what's available to the city, this whole chart is meant to kind of position it within what the city has at its, sorry, I'm missing my words, but how it fits into how housing is provided in the community. And we think about in the income level of 80% of area median income and above 80 to 100 or higher as being primarily provided by the private market in the form of, you know, we depend on the market to increase the supply and keep housing affordable at that level. When we look at the lowest income levels, zero to 30 or zero to 50% of median income, then those housing needs are increasingly provided by, through help of public subsidies or public resources. It's the middle area, the 50 to 80%, give or take, where the city has an opportunity to impact housing supply and affordability through land use and tax incentives such as MFTE. To give you a little bit of reference for what we mean when we talk about these different percentages of area median income, the current area median income for a family of four in King County is about $108,600. So we scale that up or down according to the number of our people and translate the people into an assumed household, or sorry, housing unit size, that is, number of bedrooms. So just to pick a couple of figures here, if you're wondering what is meant by 50% AMI for a family of four, that would be a maximum income of $54,300 a year. Or a family of three, it would be $48,870. And that family of three could, at that maximum income, could afford $1,222 in housing expenses a month. That's based on a standard of 30% of your monthly income going to housing. So that's how you can read this chart and kind of apply it to, or give meaning to these AMI figures that we're throwing around. So to get into the nuts and bolts of the MFTE, if you will, state law authorizes cities to exempt multifamily housing improvements from ad valorem property taxation. And the RCW citation is there. This applies to either new or rehabilitated multifamily housing. The project has to create or preserve at least four dwelling units. The city has to establish at least one residential targeted area that takes multifamily housing. And then there are two flavors of MFTE, if you will, in terms of the number of years for the tax exemption. One is an eight-year tax exemption, which the city can determine what the public benefit will be in return for that exemption. For the 12-year exemption, the public benefit has to include at least 20% of the units affordable. At a minimum of 80% of, of area median income. So for that, that duration, either eight years or 12 years, the owners will pay taxes on the land and any commercial or other non-residential improvements, but the exemption applies to the residential improvements. The law leaves cities a lot of options with respect to other factors or aspects of the project and the tax exemption. So the city can set, although the state law sets minimum or standard affordability levels, the cities have a lot of flexibility to set them, the affordability levels deeper if they like, or even higher in some cases. City has the, some flexibility over the percentage of units that can be affordable. For a 12-year exemption, as I said, at least 20% of the units have to be affordable, but some cities have set that level higher. At an eight-year exemption, the city can require affordable housing if they like or some other public benefit. But cities that we worked with, as I'll show you, have used the eight-year exemption to require 10% of the units be affordable. One nice thing about MFTE is that because it's a tax exemption and not a land use regulation, the city can put these provisions into place and see how it goes for a while. And if it looks like the tax exemption is a little too lucrative or the city's not getting enough in return, then, then you could adjust the provisions accordingly. Or if nobody's taking you up on the MFTE program, then likewise, you can adjust the provisions so that it's more attractive. Some cities have invoked sunset provisions into their programs so that, again, if they see, they want to have a set time period at which we're going to evaluate MFTE and see if it's providing the benefit or the, the housing production that we wanted. And if not, then we can even choose to drop it at that point. Layering with other requirements or incentives. A number of our cities and others have combined, in effect, MFTE with the land use requirements so that you might get, and I'll go into more detail on this, but you might have a requirement from the land use code or an incentive to provide 10% of the units at some affordability level. And then an option to also take advantage of MFTE by providing more units or deeper affordability. If you have multiple residential target areas in your MFTE program, you could have different affordability requirements between them. So you might have stronger in one area and less, less expensive requirements in another area. Pioneer projects is meant to help the early adopters, if you will, of MFT to, to get somebody in the door and show that it can work. And so in a case like that, might have, the affordability requirements might be less onerous to the developer for the first time in and then hopefully showing the success of that program. And then you can apply the standard requirements later. I haven't seen that done in MFTE, but I have seen it done in land use requirements. Another option would be to cap the number of projects. If you're not sure of how many tax exempt projects you wanted in your downtown area, for example, you could say, we'll cap it at 500 units. This is something that's been done in Shoreline, for example. That's another, kind of a different type of sunset provision because actually Shoreline's now rethinking that. Here are some more specific provisions for comparison at your neighboring communities or fellow, fellow Arch communities, if you will. So actually, seven Arch cities have adopted MFTE, but these are the four that have been most active. Kenmore was one of the earliest. They approved MFTE just for the, what is now Spencer 68 and, which is actually shown here as two projects. But since then, they've, last year, they expanded or added another targeted area around their park and ride, which is a designated transit-oriented development district. And so that's where the 60% of area median income would apply. They do not have a mandatory program, but they have an incentive program voluntary for affordable housing in the TOD. So that's not really a layered program, nor is Bellevue so much. They don't have a mandatory program, but they do have several areas of target for MFTE. So far, they've only had two projects take them up on it. Both of them are downtown. But they do have different affordability requirements in the different areas. Kirkland and Redmond are those that have had the most projects so far. And Kirkland's a especially interesting case because they have inclusionary mandatory house affordability for multifamily at 50% of median. And they set up their programs such that the MFTE program doesn't require anything additional. And so in essence, they're woven together. And they, they wanted to get that affordability lower and they want the developers to take advantage of MFTE. And so they get the 50% AMI requirement, whether they use the MFTE or not, but they all do, of course. And then Redmond is a more recent adopter, but they've already had four projects go with MFT. I think they're, most of them are downtown. There will be one in the Overlake area soon and another one in Marymore area that's not counted here yet, so. Other cities?
Excuse me, Mike.
Yes?
Mr. Mayor, if I might jump in. I'm looking at the, the time respect for the council's time tonight. I'm wondering if, if you would like that we would skip ahead a little bit. We were doing basically three segments. One is sort of an overview of MFTE that Mike's going through right now, then refresher on the needs, and then really focusing in on the policy questions that we have for you this evening. So if, Mike, if you don't mind and if the council would like, we can skip ahead a little bit to the, just a couple of the needs slides to highlight the areas that we think we have the greatest need and then talk about the policy issues that we have.
I'll take your advice on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks for your flexibility, Mike.
Yeah, that's great. What I'd like to focus on here is really a familiar story, but we've updated the estimates from, through the HUD and Census Bureau data that has, most recent reporting is showing that. cost-burdened households, that is, people who pay more than thirty percent of their income for housing, continue to be greatest among the lowest income. And not showing here specifically, but especially among renters. So you can see from, going from left to right, where in the different income levels, the incidence of cost burden declines as income goes up. So in that sense, these are your greatest housing needs. The darker bars show the, or the portion of the bars show severe housing cost burden. That is, people are paying more than fifty percent of their income on housing. And that we would say are one paycheck or one incident away from homelessness in many cases. So in Bothell, right now, the estimate for eighty percent downward in income is over twenty-one hundred severely cost-burdened households. And another seventeen hundred that are cost-burdened in that thirty to fifty percent of their incomes. So in total, we're looking at housing needs of about thirty-four, thirty-five hundred households. What we were hoping for some discussion and direction from you tonight are on these policy questions pertaining to the options that I referenced earlier. One would be choosing target areas that would be required by the state law. The Planning Commission has given us some advice or direction on this that we'd be happy to discuss with you in more depth at a future meeting. But I believe you have maps and some description in your packet about that. Second one would be the income levels that you would like the M F T E to target or to benefit. And then third would be consideration for whether you'd choose an eight-year program, a twelve-year program, or both. And then in terms of the affordability, the duration of the affordability. Now, the state law doesn't prescribe how long the housing has to be affordable for. And most of arch communities have chosen for that, units to stay affordable for the life of the project. The, the exception would be Bellevue, which coincides the affordability to twelve years of the tax exemption. That's similar to the way Seattle does it. But it's not required to, to keep it that way. And the only, the impact on your program would be that if the units are only affordable for twelve years, then presumably you could get either more affordable units or deeper affordability. Whereas if you have to keep them affordable for life of the project, then you may have to give something up in effect in terms of the number of affordable units or the affordability level. We'll do, produce some numerics, some value analysis of all these kinds of options to show you those trade-offs and how they work. And as well as with the interaction with the mandatory program. You've got a select, a couple of select areas where affordable housing would be required just to build multifamily housing. And other areas where you may consider it in the future, either mandatory or voluntary. And so the analysis that we'd like to bring you later would show you how those would interact. And several options for either layering them or stacking them, as it were.
So the direction we're looking for from the council this evening, there were five policy questions in your agenda memo. Excuse me. If you could go back to the table, Mike, thank you. So in terms of the target areas, we're proposing that the analysis look at those target areas that we worked through with the Planning Commission, unless there are some that the council would like to add or delete from that. It does not cover all of the areas in the city that would be eligible, but we also wanted to start with something that we felt was manageable to make the program more effective, hopefully sooner. As far as the target income levels, we were going to look a little closer. We weren't asking for a specific number from you this evening unless you have one in mind. But we're going to look more at the needs analysis and come up with some of those affordability levels, looking where we can to get below the eighty percent. But certainly, everything would be at least at eighty percent of area median income and see how low we can get. And that, a lot of that's going to depend on some of the economics and, and that would have to be built into the projects. So we're looking for direction from the council to see if you want us to look lower than the eighty percent. We're also proposing the twelve-year exemption that, from what we've heard, is more attractive to the development community. And then we don't have to work on developing whatever the public benefit would be under the eight-year option. So it keeps that program in place a little bit longer. As far as the duration, we would like to propose analyzing, keeping some affordability for the life of the project. As Mike mentioned, that may involve some reduction in either the number of units or a change in the income level once that tax exemption expires. But other communities have done that, I believe, is what you were saying. And so we want to suggest for the council that we analyze that as well. And then finally, look at how we would layer this with some of the other provisions that we have in the code currently, the inclusionary that Mike mentioned, as well as some other things that we'll be looking at in the future to see if we want to treat those completely separate from each other or layer them to see if that's maybe maximizing more units of affordability out of that. So those are the questions that we have before the council this evening. If there's anything you would like us to do differently than what we're proposing as far as the next steps in the analysis. And obviously, we'll come back to you. There'll be a lot more decisions in terms of the mechanisms that we put in place and, and the procedures and those types of things. Anything you wanted to add to that, Mike?
All right. Thank you for the presentation, Councilmember Dur.
Thank you for the presentation. Regarding the five questions, I would like target areas. I, I'm interested in including anything along coming B R T lines. I think there are gaps there in the map that I see. And I, I would be interested in expanding that to five twenty-two and five two-seven because we know B R T is coming along those, those routes. And I would also like to look below eighty percent. I'm a yes on the twelve-year and yes on the life of the project for some. And would like to maximize interaction with the mandatory programs. Thank you.
All right. Who's next on their thoughts?
Councilmember Thompson. I had a quick question and as well as some input on the policy direction. How much development do we see in M F T E spur or induce that wouldn't have been built already? I guess in other words, are we going to see additional housing stock developed in Bothell because of this? Or are we going to see a certain percent of units converted to affordable that were going to be built anyway? I know there's no great way to know that, but like, what's, what do you think?
I can give you a little bit of, maybe a little bit of history. Originally, M F T E was set up by the state for a ten-year exemption. And the main reason, and it didn't provide for housing affordability. The main reason was for cities to be able to try to incentivize or spur multifamily development where they didn't have enough of it. And it was only over time that cities wanted to use it for the affordable housing. So the year is there for that, for just, you know, the development purpose of it. But the twelve-year requires the affordability, as I said. So in our case, on the east side, I, you know, the motivation has not been there or needed just to make development happen. It's really been there just to take advantage of it, to produce affordable units. In other places, Tacoma is famous for using it really to get more development. But, so there, there are some communities like that, but the ones that we work with, it's really a tool for affordable housing.
Okay. And Director Kaderman, I had a question. What do we gain by disallowing this in areas that are currently eligible for multifamily development? Like, why would we not make this for every area we allow multifamily development?
And we certainly could. That's an option. We looked at initially, were those areas where, where we're seeing more of the development occurring right now? So we could capture that early on as well as proximity to other things like bus rapid transit. And we'll, we'll take another look at the map and see what areas we might have missed there. But really focusing on those areas that we thought were, were going to be more likely to see this type of development occurring. The, the, the only downside, if there is one, and this is a policy decision for the council, is how broadly you want to apply that tax exemption. Other cities typically will apply it in a more limited basis for a couple of reasons. One is just to see how well it does, and then they expand it from there. Another is just because of the, the amount of property that's taken off the tax rolls. There's not necessarily a direct impact, but you're giving up future revenues that you would get from that development. So those are some of the reasons not to do it everywhere. But again, that's a policy choice for the council to decide. And we can analyze it however you want. We can, we have the ability to look at every single multifamily zone in the city if that's what the council would like to do.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
I really want another day or two to chew on this. There's so much rich things here. And I think I first heard about M F T Es a couple of years ago. And you'd think I'd be more confident. For question one, where should the program be applied? I liked, I liked the map. My concern was if we layer it with being able to put extra, an extra layer of housing, because we have that in place for affordable housing, right? Are we being mindful of areas that sit right up against single-family homes? Otherwise, the map that the Planning Commission came up with is good. Looking at bus rapid transit lines, making sure we got all those places covered. I, I'm good with, I'm good with that. Then I have a question. Why twelve years? Is that about the time that houses start to depreciate and new stock comes into the market? What, how did the twelve-year benchmark happen?
That's, I'm not the best one to answer that, but that's kind of my understanding is that that's the timeframe in which they, developers want to, want to get their money back on the project, as it were.
Oh.
Or, or be able to sell it.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Well, if that's been chewed on a lot, I'm happy with the twelve years. And then question number three, income levels below eighty percent median income be targeted. I have this conviction that if we talk about the forgotten middle in our community, we need to think about the forgotten middle. And I think about Canyon Park where, you know, we discovered, it wasn't that surprising that people don't necessarily like to live right where they work. They like to be a little bit removed. And we're talking about that mixed use of, you know, live-work. If we were to layer, go up to a hundred percent A M I, because I noticed, oh, Kirkland's got some, some of that going on. Mercer Island's got some of that going on. But if we were to incentivize for people who, because I T people don't always, don't make that much. Teachers don't make that much. Nurses don't make that much. You have a single parent who wants to rent a one- or two-bedroom unit. They're all between that eighty to a hundred percent A M I. So if we're looking to have new, new people in the industry who are starting out, but they're not making that much money, would addressing that higher bracket of A M I between eighty and a hundred in some, in a place that's specifically like Canyon Park, where we're talking about creating new housing, would that be an incentive for people to live closer to where they're working? I, I don't, I don't know, but I, that question's going through my head.
And the, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, the, the M F T E program requires that the tax exemption apply to units that are eighty percent of A M I or below. So I don't think we could use this tool for that. I'm not sure what Kirkland and the other city you mentioned, Mercer Island.
Well, it's on your chart.
Is that, is that under the eight-year program?
It's for ownership, M F T Es for.
Ownership, okay.
And if you have townhomes or condos.
And, and we can look at the ownership option as well.
Okay.
If that's something the council would like us to look at.
But I do like the idea of, if you're talking about layering and having a variety of A M Is for different areas, I think that's great. Let's see. And did you have a question about exemption for the life of a project?
The exemption would not be for the taxes. It would just be, some of those units would then continue to be affordable beyond the, the tax exemption is what we're asking about.
Perfect.
So that we get them for the life of the project versus just for the twelve-year period.
I think that's a good argument. That's worth exploring. And then the other question was, I think the last question was, should affordable units created through M F T programs be created independently from those required? I'm not sure I really understand this question. Are you talking about using this in different zones? Like if, if the housing project were to go in and there's duplexes that were allowed to be part of that, would M F T Es be allowed to be used in those, as long as there's what, four units? Is that right?
Right.
Yeah, this, this is, this is getting at, so if you recall, we put in place inclusionary zoning. We put the foundational ordinance in place. And we've gone through a couple of areas that we have upzoned and increased the capacity. In those areas, we require a certain percentage of new units that are built to be affordable. And they have an income requirement as well. So what this is asking is whether we want to put together an M F T program that would work in conjunction with that, or if we treat it completely separate from. And I'll, Mike's more familiar with the pros and cons of that. But I think it's been done both ways in other jurisdictions.
What are the pros and cons?
Right. Well, to give you an example, Seattle has a completely separate program. So if you take advantage of a voluntary program or their newer mandatory program, that's one set of affordable units. If you want the, the tax exemption also, then you're going to provide more affordable units on top of that. What Redmond does in contrast, say, have a mandatory affordability at one level, eighty percent of median, ten percent of units. With an eight-year tax exemption, you have to lower that affordability to sixty percent of median. So it's the same ten percent units.
Okay.
But the affordability is deeper. So the M F T buys down the affordability.
Boy, there's some serious thinking that went into that. I don't know. The answer to that question is, I don't, I don't know.
Well, and we can look at it and the council can decide if you want to do that when we come back to you.
Okay.
So we're not asking for any decisions tonight.
Okay.
Just some direction.
Just got reactions and directions. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember McColl.
Thank you. I guess my question is the difference between, I'm trying to just get in my head, the difference between mandatory and voluntary. I see that some cities have both, some cities have mostly voluntary. So advantages and disadvantages? I mean, maybe you've covered that, but I guess I don't quite follow it.
With what we call voluntary means that it's entirely the choice of the developer or the owner to take the incentive or benefit and provide the housing. The mandatory means that they cannot. The mandatory means that they cannot develop without the affordable housing.
So like if I look at Kirkland, 45 units are mandatory, 155 units are voluntary. So you can make a decision about the number of units and whether it would be voluntary or mandatory?
This really gets at the, at the layering that I think we were, we were talking about just a couple of minutes ago.
Kirkland has a very complicated zoning system. In some parts of their city, affordability, affordable housing is mandatory, and in other parts, it's voluntary. And so that's where you see the split.
I think I would like more information on your analysis when you get to studying this, about where that, how that recommendation would work.
Okay.
Either one way or the other, or both.
And in Bothell, the mandatory portion would be those areas where we have inclusionary zoning, where we require new development to have a certain number of units affordable at a certain income level. The multifamily tax exemption program is completely voluntary. It's entirely up to the developer whether they want to take advantage of that or not. And what they're going to do is, they're going to look at their pro forma, they're going to look at the tax break that this provides, what the income level would be, and how many units they would have to provide at, at a reduced rent, and whether it was worth it to get that tax exemption for those 12 years to make that pencil for them.
Excellent. I like that. Thank you.
Any input on the other questions, like the duration or the eight or 12 years?
Yes. I think that I would probably say that I really like the planning commission's recommendations. I also agree with looking at the BRT lines. I think that for the lower than 80% is probably where we're all going to go or end up at, but it looks like a good idea. 12 years, affordability for life, and a combination of voluntary and mandatory. I think that's really important, and also to kind of layer separate programs. So that's kind of where I'm coming from at this point. But I look forward to your analysis in the end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. So my question is around future growth, and I think there was a comment about the mapping and how the kind of planning commission was looking at that. Is that taken to account some of the growth targets we're going to see in the North End as well?
It looks at what we have in our current plan. We don't have our growth targets yet for the next update, but we're, we're assuming that those are the areas where we're going to see most of the growth occur and where we have the capacity to do that.
Fabulous. And then, so we can adjust as we go when we start to see growth moving different areas?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. And I would agree with the councilmember Doer on the bus rapid transit or transit-oriented developments. So I'm okay with the map if that's, you know, they kind of looked at it that way. The 12 years, I'm okay with. Interestingly, Seattle King County Realtors had a, a letter that we received up here today talking about the importance of the 12-year and some of the other things that, that we're talking about today. Number three, yes, on number three. And then number four, explore more. Definitely interested in exploring more. And then number five, my computer just shut off, but I think it definitely needs some additional, you know, in remembering what the questions were, we definitely need some more look at that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So I really think we're pretty much in a strong direction here. I think our map really is covering, you know, all parts of the city, north-south, central portions. I do like the comment about the transit lines, the 12 years, 80%, or seeing if we can go lower, what availability we have of that, and also investigating extending the reductions past the 12 years, so for the life of the project. And then also, I mean, a lot of the successful cities look like they have the layered system or the more flexibility into it. So, I mean, I think that's worth exploring and seems promising. So are we getting the direction that you were looking for?
Yes, thank you. I've, I've heard two things in addition that we will include. One, we'll take another look at the, the BRT lines and the target, the map, to make sure we've captured what we intended to there, and, and then also the ownership at the 100% level. That's something that we haven't usually looked at before, so apologize, I wasn't as familiar with that.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much for your presentation.
All right. So that brings us through our study session. Anyone have any council conversations? Has a quick hand right there, councilmember Doer.
I gotta get on the road, man. I wanted to bring up Sound Transit. So we talked briefly, how long ago was it, about the parking garage and what impact it not being located on Popkinie might have on us? And I wanted to throw out an alternative that we have discussed prior, many times before, that staff I know is in favor of, and I think we might possibly be able to reopen, and that is looking into having Sound Transit put their parking garage on Kaysner. We know that P-South is probably preferable to them because it's in the proximity of Popkinie, but there are numerous problems with P-South, such as, I, I had a conversation with Peter Rogoff, and he could not answer the question if Sound Transit pays property tax. I think I can answer the question, but they don't. He wouldn't say. He's going to get back to me. But if we can't collect property tax, and if we can't ever collect REIT on that property, nor maximize the sales tax that we might get from a property that's in that location, I think we have a strong case, since we're giving up the exact same things on the 12 acres where the bus barn's going to be located, if that goes through, I think we have a strong case to ask them to revisit the, the Kaysner site. It's already there. It's ideal for multi-level entrance and exits. Maybe they wouldn't even need ramps on this first and second floor because they could, people could access from both the top and the bottom without needing a ramp. And so I just wanted to know how the rest of council feels. I know staff, that was their preferred location for the parking garage, and I don't know if it's something that, that we can make happen, but I think it's worth a shot. And so I wanted to see how everyone else feels about that.
I think the parking lot is the best place for the parking garage. I mean, we're already, I believe, not ever going to get any tax revenue off of Kaysner anyway. It's not sacrificing something important, especially as we come into a budget year where our budget is not in a good place.
What he said. Can't add to that. Kaysner makes perfect sense. I, seemed like a no-brainer to me at the beginning, so, yeah, if it comes up as a suggestion point in one of your test, touchpoints, please do.
My conversation was, I can't, the way the conversation went was, I am not having this conversation to bargain or make deals from Bothell's perspective, but I wanted to encourage him to work with us. So, and I did mention that that was a possi, that was something that we had discussed before. In fact, the, in one of the, more than one of the study sessions, they had, I had asked them to look at Kaysner, well, we were already looking at Kaysner, but also the idea of coming off of 183rd and making a right-hand turn on 103rd to get that much closer to Kaysner. So the walk from Kaysner to the BRT stop would be two blocks, I think, instead of three. Am I right, Director Lenhart? Do you remember? Can I, can I involve you in our council conversation? Is that, eh? Can you just nod? Anyway, that's my memory, is that they did look at that route. So, that's two. Keep going.
Now, as someone that uses Kaysner parking, park, parking ride today, and we get dropped off on the top of the hill, we get picked up just right outside of it, but we get dropped off out there. So, I mean, we're already walking a little bit, so, I don't know. I mean, it seems like a great location, and, and if there isn't definitive plans on where it's going, it doesn't sound like the conversation is closed yet, as they're, they haven't landed on P-South or Popkinie. So, I don't know. Doesn't sound finalized yet.
Councilmember McNeil, you're giving me a look.
I'm, I'm actually open to it. I'd want to know a little bit more about it. I think we've looked at this pretty hard in the past, on the accessibility for that, on 405, et cetera. I did have a conversation with the mayor. He does use that route in that, that parking ride there at Kaysner. So I think it's a fabulous opportunity. Just understanding kind of the 522, 405 dynamic on how we're going to work together on those two, I think is pretty powerful. So I am very supportive of it. I think that one of the things that I'm hearing is at ETP and sharing ETP is we want to try to come together with Seashore, ETP, and then South as well, and talk about the entire 405 corridor and how it aligns with 522. The reason I say that is because 522, the BRT on 522 is going to run into a bottleneck on 145th unless they fix 145th. So everybody is going to be coming this direction and heading out towards 405 if those travel times are faster. So definitely supportive of it, want to, want to look more at it.
Okay, great. I, would, do you want to weigh in, councilmember McColl?
I, I think you're on the very right track, particularly because of the issue of no property tax. And I don't, should Bothell can afford to do that? So I am supportive, yes.
So, because I, oh, go ahead.
Just a question.
Yeah.
Because I mean, they're talking about people using 522 BRT from P-South or Popkinie would have to walk blocks anyways. I mean, it, it's not right on it, so it's, it's not changing that
Right.
dynamic for ridership. It's, you have to walk.
Yeah. So the conversation, I, the conversation started with, what do we need to do to make this work? So I, I felt like Sound Transit was open to some other ideas. And when I talked to city manager, she said, well, that's already been closed, but if council would like to reopen it, a majority could tell me. So, anyway, that's, that's kind of where this came from. I, I'm hopeful. I don't know if staff, if staff's going to have a meeting or not, but I'm, there will be follow-up with Mr. Rogoff and myself, so I will, I will convey to him that message. Thanks.
Any other topics?
I'm whittling, I'm whittling my list down. This, I don't think this should have been on, it wasn't committee updates. I did, a couple of weeks ago, I did, went on kindering's tour, their Walk of Courage, and I was really impressed. It was started by several families here on the east side who had needs, who, kids who had special needs, and they met each other. It's just, this just, we don't have, yes, we do have parks here. They were met, it was born in a park. The kids were playing in a wading pool, and the parents back in the early mid, yeah, 1962, were hanging around a little wading pool, saying, what do we do for our kids? How do we advocate for our kids? And out of this has grown this tremendous organization that hits children from the ages of birth up through grades, through school, when they can graduate into school, to deal with all kinds of neurological issues and get them, get that disparity gap smaller and smaller of what they're capable of doing. So I, it was a twofold thing of the importance of parks. I think of the dog park and the side benefit that we had with people who just wanted their dogs to romp and play, and then what was born out of that? Community of people making friendships and talking, and, and we didn't have to do anything bigger and fancier than just setting up a dog park. And, anyway, parks are a good thing. But back to kindering, they're over, over there in North Creek, and their facilities are just fabulous. The, the kids and the whole range of kids, they do parental support, kids that are at risk. It's just boggling when you think of all the different needs that they meet. So capably, they have speech therapists and physical therapists and occupational therapists, just, it's, anyway, it's a, it's a tremendous organization. They're going to do another, this is where you guys come in. They're going to be doing a walk, another Walk of Courage in May, so if you have a chance to go, go. And then they asked that I pass on thanks to you guys for funding families in transition.
I was just going to mention that we fund them through our human services grants.
Yes. They're very, they made sure that I knew to pass on thanks, so they're very appreciative. And then the other thing that I wanted to suggest, and, you know, I don't know how important it is, how we, how might we foster a more public, you know, where the public is there? Because I do like your idea of coffee and cultivating friendships. Anything over food and coffee is always good. But I, I feel like with North Shore School District, when we're talking about another entity, we need to be in a public arena where people can sit and observe and hear the same information. And I don't know that we have bandwidth to do anything more formal, but would it be prudent that one or two, one or two of us go periodically to the North Shore School District Board when they're having their board meetings and just sit in and listen to their conversations, what their decisions that they're making, and then invite them to, when we think that there's something that might interest them, to come and just join and sit in and listen on what we're doing? I don't know, it's just an idea.
I don't think you have to ask for permission to do that.
No.
I would love you, I would love you to go.
But do you think it would be an effective use of our time of making sure, you know, kind of building that community in a public, you know, that dialogue of what's going on with them, what's going on with us, and how we impact each other? How, how do we do it so it's least intrusive, but still public, is my question? Is there something else, another venue that I'm missing?
I think, I think you can definitely just go to the board meetings and listen and bring back information that you hear and some of the wonderful things that they're doing. I think it becomes kind of questionable when we start making decisions with them as councilmembers. So as long as we're not engaging with them on city business, I think just go there, learn, you know, bring it back to council.
That's, I was thinking, anybody who would want to go with me, hint, hint.
We could always invite them for a joint council conversation.
Yeah. 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 But yes, whoever goes, and it's, you know, it's usually the person who has the ideas, the person who should be executing it.
I would be happy to go with you a couple of times. Yes, absolutely.
But, but then come back to council conversations and say, this has been, they're rumbling around with this, just so it's on our radar and we know about it. That's the extent of my conversing.
All right. I just had one topic, just with the weather that we had last week and everything, and who knows what we're going to be coming up with for the rest of the winter season. I was wondering what people's thoughts on were telecommuting for these council meetings? I know we have one council member that is going to be putting a lot of mileage in, and if there were some adverse weather conditions, you know, for the safety of her, that she wouldn't have to go up, you know, from Olympia to Bothell if the weather's bad.
Are you talking about for her solely, or it snowed out here and so we all do a, because I don't know how that would work.
I mean, it's far enough.
Are you talking about for an individual council member who can't be here?
Individual, yeah.
Okay.
I think it's far enough away that, different regions, different weather, and seeing, since it's our council protocol manual, I think right now it's just, you can call in for one topic, so it's pretty limited. I don't know what.
I mean, that would have the added benefit of if somebody was on a vacation and they wouldn't otherwise be able to make it, perhaps they could actually go to the council meeting instead of missing it completely, which seems like a win to me, too.
Or someone's in traction and can't leave the hospital, but needs to, yeah, no, I mean, I don't understand why that limit isn't in place. Maybe somebody knows the history of why that limit's in place.
I mean, I think it's still to encourage people to attend because that's the best way to interact. But yeah, sometimes there's just circumstances that make it challenging, so.
The, well, sorry. I was going to say, the other thing that, that can happen is, you know, that two hours is...
The, well, sorry. I was going to say the other thing that can happen is, you know, that two hours is not enough time for me to get here. Because I left today at 3:20 and I got here at 5:30. I can't guarantee that I'm always going to get out early, right? Things go over and so it would be nice to have the option of not traveling two and a half, three hours if I can just call in or Skype. I mean, I don't know. It's just a thought. It shouldn't be just me, though. I agree. I think council members that are on vacation, should they choose, should be able to call in as well and weigh in on decisions.
So my question is going to be, right now it's a limit of one. Are you suggesting, Mayor, that we open it up completely, or are you restricting it still to just a smaller number?
I think it's up for discussion on what we want. I mean, I don't want to foster a culture where just someone calls into everything. I mean, I don't, I don't see us abusing that, but I don't know if we need to have those guardrails or not.
Maybe we could have some guidelines as to when, how many miles away, or different things that might impact people from not being able to be here, weather conditions.
Yeah.
Maybe rather than to limit the number, we have more of guidelines for it.
Yeah, and I was just trying to judge people's appetite for even discussing this right now. And then, you know, if we do have interest, then, you know, staff can look at some options or some feedback for that. But I didn't want to just go down a rabbit trail just on my own.
So we're just going to look at it, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, if there's interest for it, to expand it.
To see how it would look?
Yeah.
Okay.
And just what our technical capabilities are, because I think I did it once when I was off on a work conference once for a topic and it was okay.
Okay. Yeah, and I called in one vote, too, so, in one council meeting I missed, four years. Yeah.
I've only missed three. I'm just saying, you keep using that.
I'm taking my credit. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to extend for 15 minutes.
We do not need to moch, or we do not need to extend, yeah.
Okay.
We eliminated that requirement from the council protocol, so, but we don't want to stay here all night.
I'd just like to point out that I've never missed a council meeting.
Okay, so you got what you needed on that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so I had, I had a couple of things. One was, at our last meeting, we went through council committees.
Yes.
And I met with you and councilmember Thompson to discuss PIC.
Yep.
And in that conversation, I laid out kind of what, some things that I'm working on at PIC. And the importance that I feel like that I'm still, I remain on PIC as the member of PIC. Talking with councilmember Thompson, I've offered to help mentor him, and I believe you're in agreement with that. And so I'd like to stay on as the member there for the next couple of years to finish the work that I've started. I've put a lot of time and effort into that committee. I am on the SCA board this year and I would like to maintain the relationships and finish what I've started there, so.
Thank you for bringing that up. I, I had it on my mind, but it wasn't on the agenda, so it slipped right out.
I see how important I am to you.
Slipped right out. So, yeah, so, yeah, we did have the discussion and, yeah, I think it's just, I mean, the most important thing is showing up to those meetings. And so if councilmember Thompson would be the alternate and shows up and, you know, gets to hear everything and learns everything and just so when there's a, when you feel that you've accomplished what you want and there's a transition, that he just steps in seamlessly, I think that's the best way to do it.
Yeah, and like we talked about, it's like when you, when you first take on committees, you're deer in headlights. You don't know what you don't know. You don't know who you don't know. You don't know who to talk to. But the important thing is that over the past four years, the city of Bothell has done a phenomenal job regionally in our regional appearance. I want to continue that work and hopefully bring along other council members that come on so that they can too take over and do the wonderful things that we're doing here locally. So, I appreciate councilmember Thompson allowing me to do that, to stay on to finish that work. And I look forward to continuing to serve with you on that. And it is important that the alternates go to every meeting.
Absolutely. And I just think that at some point in time, we should talk about this when councilmember Agnew is here as well, because he's currently the alternate.
Yep.
And I don't want to make any firm decisions about his space on that board until he gets a chance to weigh in.
Perfect. And I did have one more, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer that one to next council meeting.
All right, don't forget it. Things just fly out your mind.
Okay, you got my last name down, Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. McNeil.
And I have just a couple of short ones. I'll keep them really short. But first of all, I want to thank Dave Boyd from the City of Bothell Community Development Department for coming to Bothell Downtown Action Committee and discussing downtown historic preservation codes and amendments. And particularly his comment about respecting downtown fabric. He also discussed the properties, and then he also had to endure a little bit of conversation about parking, but he did it very gracefully. And I think they were just so pleased, the downtown businesses, to have somebody from the city come and present something. And I really love to have you all kind of present once in a while, so I'm inviting more people to do that. Also, I attended a marketing meeting, and I'm sorry, a meeting I didn't attend. Yes, I attended a market meeting and from the attendees, I heard about councilwoman Doer's community meeting that you had on Sunday, correct? Which was attended by?
But I didn't. I wasn't there. I passed it off.
Mayor Olson and councilmember Thompson and deputy mayor Zornz. Okay, so all three of you were there. But I thought, what I particularly wanted to pass on was this. These people who came back from that meeting said they really wanted to see more family events in Bothell so that if the city could really support these groups that do different things, they don't really need money, they just need some support. So things like tree lighting, maybe bringing music in the park back to the plaza in the city. We have a lot of wine and beer and we need more family things. So that was kind of their messages. And other than that, I think that concludes my remark. Oh, one other. I'm sorry, I will be leaving tomorrow morning and I'll be missing the next meeting on February, first meeting. But I am on the North Shore School District Equity and Diversity Committee, and I forgot to ask about that today. So if you have some information on that, I would appreciate knowing. Thank you.
Sorry, one more thing. Councilmember McColl, are you missing NPR Day tomorrow?
Yes, I am. I'll be on Hawaii, but I'll be thinking of you.
Bragger.
I'm sorry, I gotta, I'm sorry, I got one more thing. So if you're missing tomorrow.
Yes.
And you're the alternate.
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Agnew is sick, then that means that we've only got one representation, myself there tomorrow.
I, I think what I was, I realize that councilmember Agnew is ill, but I, I will be leaving for Hawaii in the morning. So I'm sorry, but I didn't plan on.
Okay, let's, let's brief offline, but I'd like to brief with you offline.
Okay.
Thank you.
Looks like we're conversed out.
Yes.
So?
I move to close the council meeting.
Chuck it.
Adjourn.
All right, we have a first and a second. Place your vote. All in favor of adjourned? Opposed? No? All right.